Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yep, okay. All right, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At this time, it's with great pleasure. I'm happy to announce that we've completed a nationwide search for a new deputy city manager. I'd like to announce that Amanda Jarrett has started her first days with the city. So Amanda recently joined us from Franklin where she was the city manager. And prior to that, she was the CEO for the Southampton County Economic Development, Economic Development Corporation. So just want to say thank you and looking forward to working with Amanda.
Welcome. Okay, welcome, and we're ready to move on.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, the first presentation will be provided by Great Neck Recreation Association Director Jeff Doy. He's going to talk about the youth tackle football program they have in Great Neck and also to seek council advice and guidance on next steps.
Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate you taking the time to have me here to kick off today's session. As Mr. Duhany said, my name's Jeff Doy. I'm with Great Neck Athletic Association, but I represent a bigger group, and that's within the city of Virginia Beach and all the area associations that play youth city football. Just a little bit of background on myself, and then we'll talk a little bit about the history of youth football here in Hampton Roads or in Virginia Beach, and then talk a little bit about the season, and then some of the asks that we're asking again from city council. I've been a youth volunteer, football coach, and director for the last 24 years at Great Neck. I'm also in the, am on the committee, if you will, for youth tackle football here in Virginia Beach, along with other area rec associations. And I'm the chosen one, if you will, for over 400, close to 500 now, boys and girls who play youth tackle football here in Virginia Beach. A colleague of mine, Damakari, who most of you have met from previous sessions, he was supposed to be here. He's had a planned surgery on his wrist, and he's in Charlottesville having that surgery, so he's not able to make it today. Just a little bit of background, because not everybody has been here for as long as the history of City Virginia Beach tackle football goes. I just wanted to give everybody a little bit of an idea, background of things that have transpired over the last few years and why we're ultimately here at this point. In 2015, 2016, City Park and Rec decided that they would do away with youth tackle football, and that was in like November or December of 2015. 2016, myself, along with a couple of others, met with Mayor Sessoms and then Deputy Mayor Curtis, and we talked to him about the merits of football. And they ultimately ended up, and after that meeting, Mayor Sessoms ended up reestablishing youth tackle football for Hampton Roads or for Virginia Beach. And then we continued under the City of Virginia Beach's umbrella. In June 2021, the City of Virginia Beach Parks and Rec decided, two days prior to registration, that they would do away with youth tackle football with really not a lot of explanation, other than there were some declining numbers, and they wanted to reallocate those resources elsewhere. We met with city council, and some of you were part of this. We met with city council and had a whole group, a contingent of players, former players, parents, former parents, come in in the informal session and talk about the merits of it. And then in 2021, we did get a grant from the city to continue with youth tackle football. It wasn't under the City of Parks and Rec's umbrella, but we were able to, we were able to secure the grant, be able to continue to help these youths and these kids move forward. In 2022, we had always used the PAC, and if you recall, and some of you have been here maybe as long as I have, the PAC was actually originated and developed for youth tackle football for the City of Virginia Beach. In 2022, the City Parks and Rec came back and said, citing lack of manpower, that they weren't going to be able to do anything with us at PAC. And so they would give us some different resources and allocations for city usage. But at the same time, we were going to have to ultimately end up paying for that, which we hadn't paid for the PAC previously. So in 2022, we asked for $15,000 grant because of increased numbers and participation. We got, and I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know how the grant process works, if that came from Parks and Rec or that came from city council at the time. But ultimately, they, we had asked for $15,000, and they had given us a grant for a little bit more than $8,000. In 2023, when we came and we approached city council again, Councilman Taylor provided a grant from his budget for $15,000, extremely gracious of, and to continue with city youth tackle football in Virginia Beach. So that's just kind of a history of where we are and how we got to here. Just want to give you kind of a little bit of a background as far as the last four or five years ago. In 2021, coming out of COVID, I don't need to tell anybody, there's no surprise that numbers declined coming out of there. Parents were a little concerned about getting back involved in the contact aspect of it when COVID was still going on. And so there was a lot of apprehension from the parents. We had four at the time. We were down to four area rec associations that could sponsor and program and be involved in football. We had approximately 10 teams that were there that were with us in 2021, and with about 200 youth men and boys and girls that were part of that. When we decided, when City Parks and Rec came back and said they weren't going to fund this anymore, we decided to get together collectively as groups within all the associations and talk about how do we grow this, how do we grow the program? How do we do things the right way and continue to grow this and make this a staple of youth sports here in Hampton Roads? In 2022, we increased, we added an association. Bayside came back onboard, and they were part of us. We went from 10 teams to 17 teams, and from about 200 players to nearly 400 players were involved after just that one year. And a lot of it had to do with COVID. With COVID, you know, starting to decrease and be out of the minds of parents, we started to get more participation, and we were also able to increase another association. In 2023, Woodstock came back onboard, and we went from nearly 400 players to 430 players that were there. And going into 2024, Woodstock came in with one team to start with because the infrastructure to start youth football is significant. So they had one team. This year, they're actually going to increase to three teams. There's also been conversations with those in Green Run to begin to start a tackle football program back in Green Run. And so our feeling is that we will have seven area associations going into this year from four in 2021 and nearly 500 players. And the rough numbers are about 475 to 490 is what we're thinking that we'll have. And I think we'll easily get to 20 teams. And remember, three years prior to that, we're at 10. I think we'll easily get to 20 teams. And the important thing to note out of all this is that these are area rec associations. These aren't teams or programs that are coming in from other areas. These are people that are within our communities and that are part of our rec area associations. So I brought up Councilman Taylor and his generous grant for $15,000. And it's important to note, and I don't think I necessarily did a great job of explaining this last year, although I'm part of Great Neck, this isn't about Great Neck. This is about all the associations that are part of this, that are part of this city, that are part of this shared commitment that we have. And that shared commitment should also be along the lines of what city council looks at. And if you look at our associations that we have mapped out here, it covers pretty much every councilman or councilwoman in this room. Our courthouse area, which obviously is big, they also pull from Creeds. Creeds doesn't have the bandwidth or the density of population to be able to field long term. You've got Great Neck that covers multiple districts. You have Bayside that also covers part of multiple districts. Woodstock, Salem, and West Kemsville as well. And then if you add the Green Run in there, if you add Green Run, which we're anticipating them coming onboard for this coming year, it pretty much encompasses the majority of Virginia Beach that we're looking at for 2024. And the other thing, and Councilman Taylor asked this question last time because his experience at King's Grant, is you know, how does the registration process work? How does, what do you need the expenses for? And I'll go back and I'll restate something. I just wanted to show this as far as a graphic goes, but when you're under city, when we were under the City Parks and Rec, they covered the frontline expenses. And the frontline expenses covered field allocation and field costs, if there were any particular field cost to utilization of PAC. They were the ones that brought in security for the games. They were also the ones that brought in the EMSs, the officials, which is the primary expense of all youth athletics and youth football. They were the ones that brought in the officials and also paid the officials, and that came from their budget. And that wasn't necessarily area associations' budget, that came from their budgets. In addition to that, the grounds crew of being able to line the fields, paint the fields, set up the fields, tear down the fields, oversight and supervision of making sure that coaches were certified, that the kids had correct birth certificates, that their weigh-ins were possible. All that oversight and supervision were done by the City Parks and Rec, and ultimately facilities, whether it's facilities for weigh-ins, facilities for the management side of things, for second weigh-ins and so forth, and ultimately the playing field. So all of that was covered under the City of Virginia Beach's Park and Rec budget. And so our associations were responsible for the aspects that were important for us to be able to come together as one. One is equipment. And I don't know if you guys know anything about equipment, but equipment cost is astronomical. A helmet nowadays costs $200 just to outfit a helmet. But equipment for players is about anywhere between $400 and $450 per player. We've got insurance costs that we have to cover. We have registration fees that we have to cover, and then ultimately uniforms, whether they're game uniforms or practice jerseys and uniforms and stuff like that. And all of that adds up. And the big thing for us, when we got together collectively as a group, we said, how can we continue to grow this, but we have to make this affordable for our community. We're, some areas have underserved kids. Some areas have parents that either lose jobs and can't afford to do it, but we have to do something right for these kids and be able to make it affordable for them. If they do travel football or they do something other than City of Virginia Beach football, they're asked for a much larger shared commitment. They have travel expenses they have to do, they have hotel expenses, and a lot of people can't afford that. And so what we do is we come to the table with an affordable option for these kids, and we've done things the right way, and we've committed to them to continue to grow and do things the right way. And that's a shared commitment with all the associations when we ultimately get together. So I just wanted to give a little bit of a recap on our youth expenses for, these top-line expenses for 2023. The majority of expenses are exactly what we had talked about. We have field allocation or field expenses that we had through the Princess Anne Annex. We also had to do weigh-ins at the rec center, our field paint, game balls, security, EMT, all of those frontline expenses. And then you see officials, game officials, that's by far the number one expense, and that's just the reality of youth sports and being able to have qualified officials and being able to make sure that they can help manage games in there. So our expenses for this year were $26,000, almost $27,000, and that grant from Councilman Taylor covered $25,000 of that. So the area associations, the area associations ultimately have to absorb the additional costs that are along with that.
Speaker, it was, because I want to be clear for the public, through reconciliation, we all received an amount that we could determine where it went.
Okay.
It was collective.
Okay.
We all voted, and actually voted against the budget, but it was an appropriation that I wanted. So I just, in fairness.
Okay. I appreciate that, because I wasn't, you know, I'm not on the inside, so I don't necessarily know how that it's all done.
Thank you for that question.
I just want to comment on that. That's why I vote for the budget, because I thought the way that last-minute reconciliation came up was very inappropriate, and I hope we don't ever do that again.
So, and if you have questions, please feel free to stop. I'm more than happy to take questions as we ultimately go along with that. So question is, why is this ultimately important? So the first thing is, and I mentioned this a little bit ago, is that affordable registration. We have to give these kids the opportunity and these parents the opportunity to do something that's affordable for them. And to ask them to have a commitment of $250 to $350 is going to preclude a lot of parents and a lot of families from being able to participate in youth athletics. The one thing that we do, and I know other associations do, is we also grant what we consider scholarships. Those people who have hardships, those parents who can't afford, because a parent may be have lost a job, they can't afford that, we will grant them a scholarship, and the scholarship means that they're not going to pay anything. And so we have ultimately three to five, probably in our association, I know other associations do the same thing, we're not going to turn around, turn back a kid because they can't afford it. Travel leagues will, other associations that are outside of our umbrella of youth football in City of Virginia Beach will do that, but we're never going to turn a kid away. It's too important for them, and it's too important for us to be able to mentor and be able to do the right things for them. Second thing is, there's no travel and no fundraising. We're not going to pass costs along. There's an entry fee, if you want to do travel football, there's an entry fee for that, and then they're going to ask you to do additional commitments. They're going to ask you to do fundraising, they're asking you to put more money into the coffer, because they're trying to get to either Orlando or other areas, and we're not going to do that. The cost of what you're getting for registration is the cost that you're ultimately going to end up paying. Safety, and we'll talk about this here in a minute, safety's paramount. And a lot of these youth football leagues, there's no weight limits that are associated with it, so you could be 12 years old and 185 pounds, and you're playing against kids that are 90 pounds. We made sure when we committed to doing this the right way, that we were going to continue to uphold weights, and we're going to make it fair and equitable for everybody that goes in there, and I'll speak to that in a little bit. The other thing is cuts. There are no cuts with us. It's a first-come, first-served basis, and when we ultimately end up full in each of our additional teams, we cap registration. So it doesn't matter how good or how bad you are, we are not going to cut anybody that's part of our program. And the last thing, and why this is important, is mental health. And I don't need to tell anybody in this room, all you got to do is talk to a teacher and administrator in schools, and mental health is real. I mean, it is absolutely for real. And for, to give these kids the outlet, to give them the opportunity to have a shared commitment, to give them the opportunity to have camaraderie and a goal and a focus, there's no price that can be put on that. And when you're talking about nearly 500 kids now that'll be participating in that, it's hard pressed to say that these kids don't deserve this funding. So I brought up safety, and I just wanted you to understand, you know, our divisions and how this ultimately goes, because safety is obviously paramount for us. We've had three divisions, one is a junior, intermediate, and senior. Juniors are eight and nine, so we don't have a limit between eight and nine, for eight and nine-year-olds, and there's obvious reasons for that. We don't want kids really concerned about what they're weighing at that young age. There are a couple of kids that are bigger than other kids, but we have a, what we call a striper rule, that they would have to play on the line, and they wouldn't be playing, you know, in a skilled position or something like that. And then we also allow 10-year-olds to play if they're under 75 pounds. And all we're trying to do is give them an opportunity to gain confidence so that they're playing against kids their own size that are out there. Our intermediate league, which is 10 and 11-year-olds, that goes up to 10 and 11 and 12, that goes up to 140 pounds. And then if you're 12-year-olds and you're undersized, and we have, you know, a fair amount of kids that are 12-year-olds under 100 pounds, they have the opportunity to play in that intermediate league. And then ultimately, our senior league, which are 12 and 13-year-olds, and that goes up to 165 pounds. And then for ages that are, if you're 14, you have to weigh under 150 pounds, and you can't play high school football, whether it's JV or varsity or anything like that. So what we try to do is keep in mind the kids and making sure that they're playing with kids their own size and that they are not in a position where safety is an issue. So for 2024, and this ultimately is what the ask is, so we're talking about increasing from 17 to 20 teams. And what that really means is that there's going to be more games played. We have a commitment, or we know that we're going to increase teams in Woodstock. We also know that we're going to potentially get a green run, at least one team to start with, because of the cost of overhead. And so ultimately, what that means is more teams and more weeks, and when you have more weeks, you have more costs with EMT, you have more costs with security and things of that nature. So ultimately, and I think you all have a copy of this, ultimately, the budget here that we're proposing as that top-line expenses are roughly $36,000. And that is, and I feel that that's a minimum number, and I will say this, everything that we have said that we would do as organizations from 2021, when we first came in and talked to you guys, to today, has been right on. And we are making sure that we have a commitment to these kids and that we're growing this the right way, and ultimately, growing this the way that we think would continue to garner long-term care and long-term support for this. So this is where we have derived our budgets from, and this is for 20 teams. We could very well have 20 or 21 teams this year, but I wanted to give a number that I think is doable for us, because I know we're going to have 20 teams this coming year. And again, remember, coming out of COVID last year, we had 21 teams, I mean, we had 10 teams. So to increase and double the size and overdouble the amount of kids that are in this league is something that our volunteers and all of the associations have come to heart and really are proud of the accomplishments that have been made. So this is my little diatribe, if you will. So why are we here? Why should we support the youth? Why is this funding important to them? Ultimately, we should be having a conversation of either, number one, long-term funding for these kids, or number two, how does this go back under Parks and Rec? And I don't know if that's ever going to be the case, but these kids need long-term funding for them so that they can continue to grow and continue to prosper. So these kids, so there needs to be a voice, and I don't know, fortunately, unfortunately, I'm the one that's going to be the voice today for these nearly 500 kids that are asking for your commitment. And we've got to have somebody that's going to stand up for them. And we've got to have somebody that's got to talk to city council and say, please do what's right for these kids and support them in what they're trying to accomplish, not only as use, but ultimately in the reward of what they're doing in life. So first is providing them the opportunity. We've got to provide them the opportunity to excel. We've got to provide them the opportunity to be able to have a goal and be able to have them, be able to get them the opportunity to have camaraderie with one another and get them out of their shells. Second is affordability. I will say this, without your commitment, this probably won't happen, and that's just the reality of it. We're not structured, our associations are not structured to take on the commitment of the overhead expenses of what the City Parks and Rec covered at that point in time. Without expending additional $150, $200 per parent, we're not structured to be able to do that. So that's why we're here to ask for your support and ask for your help. Field usage. So, and you guys know this better than I do, the Princess Anne Annex is going to be occupied by Princess Anne High School at some point in time, maybe next year, something of that nature. And then what does that do? We're scheduled to be there this upcoming year. What does that do down the road? Is there a way for us to get back with Princess Anne Athletic Complex? There are fields there that are available. Is that something that we could ultimately do either this coming year or when Princess Anne High School takes over and we're maybe not able to use those fields? What can we ultimately end up doing, and can we be able to do something at the Princess Anne Athletic Complex? And then final thing is ongoing support. And, you know, we're here to talk about this year, but I would love the opportunity to talk about an ongoing support mechanism. And again, the budgets that I shared every single year have been pretty much right on as far as where we think we're going to head and what those expenses are ultimately going to be. So I will say this, and I appreciate you guys listening to me, and I appreciate your support up to this point. There's two things that I would like to offer to city council as we go about this. The first thing is, I would love to have everybody out there for a day. And we pick a date, in September, October, it doesn't matter what it is, it's convenient for everybody, and I would love for you to be out there, seeing how this benefits the kids, talking to the parents, talking to the coaches, listening to the coaches and how they communicate with the kids. And so we have, everybody here has an understanding of where this money's going and how it's being utilized. And I would love to do that this coming year if the opportunity presents itself, because I think it's too important, because this is everybody's community. Every district is covered under this, and I would love for you to see how we operate. I would love for you to see how we interact with these kids and the commitment that these kids, the commitment that we've given to these kids and how well it's worth it. And then ultimately, the last thing, what I would like to do is, Great Neck has a banquet every year, our association personally has a banquet every year, and I'm going to personally invite every one of you to the banquet. If you can make it great, it's sometime in November, beginning of December, and I want you to hear the stories, and I want you to be able to see these young men and the lives that you've been able to touch for that. It is extremely important to them, it's extremely important to us, and I think you would certainly benefit from seeing how the resources that you've allocated to these kids and the impact that it's made on their lives moving forward. So with that, I will take, I'd love to take any questions or any comments that you have. And then I have a question if you guys don't.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this information.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, on the resources page, you have a total of $36,000. What, is that the ask for city council?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Harper?
Well, I do remember the first presentation you made, asking us to pick it up when the Parks and Rec could not, and I'm very glad you've had the opportunity to prove yourselves and the group, you've certainly done a great job.
Thank you.
I think we have to find a way to make this continue, because it obviously is very important. But it's this long, ongoing time that we have to deal with, and now how do we get it back kind of into the city fold? Because this has kind of been my concern about our going out and supporting various individual nonprofits who all do a wonderful thing, but then they all become dependent on the city and how in the world do we fund everything? It's kind of getting out of hand. So we've got to get this all under control. So how we can do this, and of course, that's going to depend an awful lot on Parks and Rec and how it can be done, and if they have difficulties, we need to know what that is. But I do think we need to work on what your long-term solution is. No question about that. I'm real concerned about, we've been talking about Princess Anne Athletic Complex and the need to have a master implementation plan out there, and this obviously is a part of it. We need to accommodate everything that needs to happen out there. That means we've got to do some work out in that area. But when you say you have something about Princess Anne High School, I mean, are you, do you use Kellam? Is that what you're using now?
So we use the Old Kellam High School, which is the Annex. Yep, and...
You were saying Princess Anne, and I was...
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So you have been using the Old Kellam.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't think Princess Anne High School is going to move anytime soon, so you've got that for as long as you want it, I think.
Oh, I thought there was, my understanding was that there was a school that was coming in there.
We were planning on it, but I don't know that that's going to happen on the plan because of, so, but I just think, I just really hope we could have a city manager, have someone sit down with these folks and see how we can provide the service in the way that we can and know what we're doing and not find out that we're creating additional obligations and different programs all around that are not under the city umbrella. We just can't do that. So however we can get this, I think we need to work on it.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, just quickly on that, I think this came about because the Parks and Rec Board took a vote previously on moving towards flag football and moving away from tackle football. And I think there isn't bandwidth to serve all the sports needs underneath the Parks and Recreation umbrella, and I think that was because of that years ago. And Michael, I don't know if you want to add additional context to that? So I think the struggle right now is, there's always more requests from the community to cover Parks Recreation Sports underneath Parks and Rec, but there isn't bandwidth to accommodate every sports request and need. I think this was one that the Parks and Rec Board took a vote towards, no longer including underneath the offerings that the city provided. And every year, there are sports that don't fit underneath that because of the bandwidth of staff and resources.
Yes, Sabrina, and then Amelia.
To just add more context to that, as the Parks and Rec liaison, I do remember that vote. I also remember there were a few stakeholders, key stakeholders, that were not there and who could not provide, I guess, the full picture of what was needed for the program and how it benefited the program. So unfortunately, since they were not there, they were not able to push against this decision. And so certainly, they were cut from the program, but from what I understand, and certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, I think some discussions have come up before where there was a lot of support, but those folks were not heard.
Correct.
Exactly. And so what we found is that the support is there, the need is there, the kids definitely are enriched by the program. And so I know Parks and Rec, in terms of staffing, were not able to support it, but I know with a recent study we had, there was a suggestion to hire more staff for Parks and Rec to address some of the other needs throughout the area. So perhaps, at some point, we can integrate this program back into Parks and Rec, because I know one major issue was staffing. The other thing I would say, Mr. Doy, you and Attorney Makari have certainly, and as well as all of the coaches, have certainly been able to weather the storm. Every barrier that was thrown at you, you just went past that, you know, and addressed it for the kids, because it's so important, the coaches who give their time, the parents, and the children. It is just so important. And when you see their faces, I know some of the things that you guys do is you just train them up to become better individuals. And when they come to the program that you have, the banquet, they're all dressed really nice to become young professionals. And I think that's a key element we need with our youth, just really investing and pouring in them and helping them get to the point where they become mature and these boys grow into men. It's kind of like, almost, you know, near a rite of passage that kind of helps them where they may not have that type of support in other areas, and then you do a lot to help the underserved, and that's key. You give back, and you help those who cannot, who would not be a part of the program. And I think that is... And I think that is commendable, uh, of what you do, uh, Train McCary, the coaches, the children. I think it's a phenomenal program.
Thank you.
And so we do have to continue to support and find out a way to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, Amelia?
Um, I have two, um, quick questions. Where you have, you pay the game officials, the coaches, do they get paid?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And also transportation, how do you handle that?
Um, so it's, it's interesting, two things. Transportation, since we're all in Virginia Beach and we all play at the Annex, um, transportation is all done by the parents. Um, there are in, in some instances, um, and I know the coaches in Woodstock this past year, um, they would have to pick up a lot of their kids. Um, parents, parents drive, I mean, parents work, um, or they're not supportive or they're not there. And I would, I know that JB, which is the, the, the coach that was, um, for Woodstock, he'd pick up four or five kids on his way to, uh, on his way to games every single day. He'd have to pick them up and take them home from practices. So there, you know, it's all, everybody's on their own in transportation, but we do what we have to in order to pick kids up because commitments from the parents or, or whatnot that are, that aren't there.
And can I ask for Mr. Kirschman to come up a minute? I remember when this came up and you spoke about it. Just to refresh our
Yes, ma'am.
... memory. Because it sounds like something that you're looking more at dedicated, like what Councilman, Councilwoman Henley mentioned, we need to get around the table, kumbaya, on what, which ones are important.
So, uh, did you want a little background on how we got to where we are now?
Yes.
So this goes back quite a ways before I even got here. And when the original discussion happened in 2015, 2016, uh, one of the issues or one of the, um, arguments against dropping the sport at that time was there weren't any alternatives. So following that discussion, Parks and Recreation engaged and started offering non-contact alternative sports, such as the seven-on-seven passing league and flag football. Over the subsequent years, those programs continued to gain youth participants while tackle football declined. And tackle football is a very labor-intensive sport to offer between weigh-ins, between officials, between EMS. There are additional elements of tackle football that don't exist with other youth sports. At that time, Park and Rec reassessed, as, um, Patrick Tuhany talked about, as the city manager talked about, we did vet this through the Park and Rec Commission because it was labor-intensive, costly, declining numbers, and our other programs were increasing. We had to make a decision, what are we going to do? We didn't have enough staff to run all the sports. And so we decided to go with the sports that were on the upswing, that were more inclusive and less costly than the youth tackle football. And that was the time when Great Neck stepped in, thankfully, stepped in and took over the program for the city. So that's kind of how we got to where we are now in terms of Great Neck is running with the program. It is thriving, which is great to see. Uh, Park and Rec has the sports we currently offer. We always reassess, just like we do rec center programs, other sports, special events. We assess programs and see if they're on the growth phase, declining phase, if they plateaued, and what we need to do so that we can use our resources the most effectively. Um, I will tell you that if Park and Rec were to take this back on, certainly, um, we will do as directed to do. That will either entail additional resources needed or the elimination of other current fall sports.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation because I was wondering, thriving, that's happening now. You've mentioned resources. You know, there's a lot of things that goes into this mix.
Yep.
So thanks for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Christian, then Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Michael, if you, you can hang out.
Sure.
For a few minutes. I appreciate the thorough background. Um, council member, Ross Hammond, often talks about lived experience and it is important. Um, I was on the board of a, a recreation league at the time, these decisions were starting to be made. And unfortunately, because there was, um, some, some communications issued, there were football leagues and, um, Mr. Doi, you can, um, verify this, that had invested thousands and thousands of dollars into new equipment, helmets. And when these programs were cut, uh, and at that time, again, there was also a lot of media attention around CTE and some of the head injuries and, you know, some leagues, some communities took that, you know, really seriously.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so what it did was it actually took resources out of the recreation leagues because they had exhausted so much money. And now they had storage units filled with helmets and pads and you can't really sell that back on the second market. Um, and so I appreciate giving that background. Secondly, I, I really like how you pointed out that this program does benefit the entire city. It's not just Great Neck, um, because we often around this table discuss equity, opportunity, access, um, and the impact that our, uh, programming, whether that be arts and culture, whether that be youth sports, has on youth. And these coaches are all volunteer. And what I heard from you, Mr. Uh, Doi, Doi is looking for a dedicated funding source and that's continued to come up around this table is, um, what are we directing the city manager to do as a whole? Because, uh, also with five years coaching at the middle school level volunteer, um, and paid, uh, which is not much, um, for some and many students in our city, uh, if they're not going to the rec center after school, youth sports is their outlet. Um, and it's important that when you look at mental health, when you look at safety, you mentioned, which was pretty, uh, I wasn't expecting to hear that, but some, not all parents are necessarily as committed as they want to be or can be, whether that's because of work. I know my middle school coach picked me up and took me home, uh, because my parents were working and it was a lucky day if we stopped at Burger King so he could buy me a sandwich. And so a lot of our, our students and our kids are depending on these programs. Um, I like how you mentioned no cuts because you get to a place in middle school where you're just not good enough, you don't make the team. But does that mean that we put all those students out, uh, of sports? Uh, you look at no travel and additional expenses. Uh, again, uh, as someone that coached for over 12 years, um, the sports center is a phenomenal asset. It's putting heads in beds, but it has also impacted many youth basketball leagues because not all the parents, uh, if you live in Thalia or if you live in Aragona, you don't necessarily want to drive to the oceanfront, uh, twice a week where you could just go to that local middle school or elementary school. And again, I coached my kids last year, so I, I liked walking across the street to King's Grant for an hour and just practicing basketball. Um, you're, you're touching, uh, ages eight through 14 adolescents. And again, once we get to middle school, oh, and, and at fourth and fifth grade, we realized the bullying and some of those mental health aspects. So, um, I'm just thankful that you brought the presentation today. Thank you for my colleagues that sponsored it. Um, I'll be direct, the reason that my name's not on it, uh, as a sponsor, uh, is I did see this as a collective and I didn't see last year where we put a lot of money towards it. So I didn't just want to, we have a lot of presentations. So, um, thank you for everything you're doing, for your coaches, your volunteers. And to Dr. Ross Hammond's question, uh, these coaches are doing it all for free. Um, and it's a thankless job. So thank you all so much.
Hey, Barbara?
I just have a feeling that a lot of the things that you have developed as a part of this program, which are so really good and very flexible and the way you do things, it's not the way we would be able to do it if it were a city facility because of a lot of things. But the staffing and, and a lot of these things. So how do you work a program that is as flexible as these people have been into what we might have to do in a public kind of situation? Is there, so is there a way that this program can be an umbrella or the, the city can just be an umbrella for programs like this? If we were to allocate that, this amount of money or some such, just so it has some connection with the city? I don't know, but I just have a feeling that they've had a lot more flexibility with how they operate than maybe we would be able to have as a public. So just kind of the way I know, the way things work. So anyway.
Councilmember Henley, so your, um, comment, that's kind of what's going on right now. You know, that it's not a city-sponsored, it's not a city program anymore, but it's city council-sponsored. So they do, um, get access to city resources, right? They do utilize the, um, the fields that we, um, give to them. And then they do get funding from council and then to the other abilities that we can, um, support them in a way we, I think staff does that. I think, Michael, I don't know if you want to opine on that or speak to that, you know, but I think they are kind of, they do really receive some level of city support financially from council, but also fields and resources is striping, I think, as well.
Correct. Uh, what happened, what happened the last couple of years is, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would line the fields the first time and then they would continue to line the fields. Once the, the lines are put down the first time, they just refreshed each, each, each week for the games. Didn't do it this year? No. Uh, so we do things like that. We allocate fields like we do for all the other youth athletic associations that we don't work directly with or that are underneath us. So we provide pretty much the same level of support for any other youth league not directly underneath us to the best of our ability.
I would really kind of, I, I lose track of just how you're able to do that because I know a lot of the leagues are not city, but they are and you all work with them. I need to be, um, better informed about how that works. If you've got a one pager that you can kind of show how you operate.
We do.
Okay. Thank you. I need that.
We'll send something in the package this week for your council member Henley and for the rest of the council as well.
Okay, first.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. One last.
Uh, Mr. Kirschman, do you all still provide the background checks for the leagues? Because I remember having to drive down to the portable and you couldn't touch a kid, coach a kid, see a kid before all those clearances were made. And that's a, that's a serious concern too nowadays.
We do. Go.
Yeah, um, real quick, yes, that, yes, they do. Um, they, they do the background checks. Um, we have to have the NACE, um, they're, they're for everything that's done that, that you would have do at King's Grant. All of the coaches have to have that type of, of, uh, certification in order to get their badge and they cannot be on the field. So we take the infrastructure, Barbara, this, it maybe comes to some of your, your, your discussions about flexibility. We took the infrastructure of what was originally had through, with, through under city parks and rec and we kept that same structure. So all of the badge requirements, all the certifications, all that stuff continues to, to be the same. Our weight limits are in the, in and around the range of what they have been enforced. So the infrastructure was there and we just took it and overcame some of the additional hurdles that, that, that we originally had.
Sounds like you did a great job.
And finally, Mr. Kirsch, any pressure points there, being able to handle that last year?
No, nothing I know.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Okay, thank you all very much. I was very jaded. Yes, Michael, you're up next.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it, everyone.
Yep. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we're going to bring forward, um, basically a Parks and Rec needs assessment, but not focused on the recreation center, just primarily on the parks infrastructure. And this will be given by our consultant as we get ready to wrap up our plan. There's no request or ask of you at this time other than to review kind of where our consultants and our city staff is going to give any guidance and feedback that you all may have. I think Michael Kirschman wants to lay the groundwork before you hear from our consultants.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, Mayor Duhany. It's my pleasure to be here today. Um, if you recall, back in 2020, we completed the modernization study for the rec centers. And that study really helped lay us the groundwork for what's the future of the centers, what are the issues we're facing, uh, what's the potential costs, uh, to keep those centers running and really gave us a master plan and a blueprint for the recreation centers. Following that plan, we then turned our attention to the outdoor parks. And we engaged in, over a two-year process, uh, we hired Kim Lee Horn as well as their sub consultants to really do a deep dive into the outdoor parks. What are the needs? What are their costs? What's the future and what is the plan for the park system moving forward? So it's my pleasure to be here today, uh, to introduce Tristan Cleveland with Kim Lee Horn. And she's going to do a very high-level overview of a lot of data. And what I'm most proud of with this report and this study is that for the first time, we looked at the entire park system through an equity lens. So where do we have inequities? Where if and when additional funds become available at some point in the future? Should we invest more heavily based on some of the factors you're going to see in this report? And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Tristan and both myself and Chad Morris are here for questions afterwards as well. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for that introduction. Thank you all for having me today. It is my pleasure to be able to present our findings. It was a very detailed series of reports that we did. We had a really great team that we put together to be able to dive into the analytics for all of these and then particularly with that focus on equity, um, coming through here. So let's hopefully I can, all right. So, um, starting with the overview of the process, going to run through that pretty quickly into what our findings were, the recommendations, and then, um, the prioritized, um, uh, looking forward over the next 15 years and the costs associated with that. Want to start with the process? So this was an analytical process, quantitative, um, uh, starting with an understanding of what the system is. Uh, so an assessment, looking at the, um, the public needs. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department does a biannual, um, survey, a statistically valid survey. So we had those findings from 2017, 2021, and then just recently the 2023. So we have the understanding from the public. We also engaged stakeholders, um, through this process, uh, went out and reviewed a sampling of project sites, um, mapping, demographics, uh, so a really great foundation. We take that through, um, to the, uh, to, through the recommendations and the final prioritization. Each one of those steps is reliant upon the findings from the previous step. The idea that there is transparency, that there is a reason for every one of the recommendations that we come out, um, of this process with. And Michael, uh, introduced this, I want to emphasize it, equity was the focus, uh, for this process. Parks and Recreation Departments are always providing their updates and looking ahead, but the Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation Department wanted to make sure that equity was emphasized. So we ho- held a workshop with city staff to determine the lenses of equity. You can see that we are four that arrived upon, environmental, design, economic, and access. We developed levels, um, metrics of success and that, uh, these lenses, those metrics of success carried through every single one of the steps, various parts of the presentation. I will pull out specifically, um, what the, those equity metrics were, um, what was processed. But behind that, you'll see it in the final report too, but I want to let you know that through every step of the way, we're looking at it in, um, through these lenses. I want to introduce first the Parks and Recreation, um, system and the standards, um, just so we can be aware of like the capacity, um, of the system and just the breadth of it. So there are, um, 365 city parks, um, currently developed. There are also undeveloped parklands. City schools, um, for the elementary and middle schools do function, uh, as local neighborhood parks with those sports facilities, the, the playgrounds there. Uh, there are a lot of, um, uh, state and federal lands open as well. So the department covers a lot of services, but, uh, despite the large numbers of parks in there, it's, um, uh, there are still some inequities, which I want to share, but also just it's a very large scope, um, of parks that the department is managing. Want to start also with an understanding of the classification. So when we started, the department was using 16 different park classifications. So we have condensed these down into five different categories. You can see here where those line up. Uh, and what this means is it gives us a better ability and the department a better ability to have recommendations, to have standards, to be able to manage and operate the system a little bit more cohesively. When you have 365 parks, you have to have some systems in place, uh, to be able to direct, um, the, the management. Also associated with this are developing standards. Uh, so department had standards, but making sure that the standards line up with those, um, classifications. Uh, and so we developed different development levels. Associated with these development levels are different types of amenities, the numbers of amenities. And what this means is that anyone coming to a Virginia Beach park knows what they're going to get. They're going to get excellence. Uh, and so main, making sure that every one of those parks at the bare minimum meet that essential level. You can see we have some, um, charts of which different types of parks it's appropriate to be developed there. But again, just some standardization, some quality of service, uh, that we're ensuring through this, um, report. So into the equity-based needs analysis. So if I may say so, this gets into some really interesting, um, bits, especially if you're into numbers and maps. So part of this is starting off with that access, access equity of seeing what's available for the public based on a population, uh, level of service. And so with this one, we did analysis both of the park land, but then also the park amenities. So some high-level takeaways from this is that parklands and amenities are unequally distributed through the city. That, to some degree, that is to be expected based on historical patterns of development when opportunities arose, but it is unequal. And so how can we then, showing you the steps that we're going through, how can we then later, with the recommendations, address some of those inequities? You can see some of those maps down there of areas that have shortfalls. I want to point out that the citywide parks, which you, if you remember from a couple slidebacks, those are the larger regional destination parks, that there is a shortfall across the board of those citywide parks. And then that spreadsheet is lining up with the different amenities that there are shortfalls with. And so the amenities that have the greatest shortfalls are those larger-scale amenities that are really only appropriate at those destination, those regional, those citywide parks. So we're starting to see some alignment there, like shortfalls of citywide parks, shortfalls of the amenities that are in there. But of course, there are also shortfalls of pretty much every amenity in there. You can see in red shortfall, there's a lot of red. We've highlighted some extreme shortfalls. Also want to point out that even if you are meeting the current needs, that you need to be looking ahead. So that's what that second column is of where those shortfalls would be continuing to increase. It's keeping up with the population growth, but also with trends. And so pickleball is a really good example of this. In 2017, pickleball was the lowest priority from the public, from that, that public survey. Coming up to 2021, it had jumped ahead. It was now kind of still low, but kind of middling. And the 2023 survey that just came out, it is now solidly in the middle. It is, in fact, ahead of every other sports facility, athletic facility, in terms of public importance. But the city hasn't been investing in building those new pickleball courts. So this is just one, one example of needing to be able to keep up with the trends, to be able to make sure that you're meeting people's needs, that you are keeping their interest, that the quality of cities recreational match all the rest of the high-quality services within the city. So that was the numbers. Now getting into the maps associated with equity. So we have a series of four maps here. The one to the left is the CDC's Social Vulnerability Index. This is looking at a series of different factors in terms of economics, education levels, poverty, health. So you can start, it's a really great baseline to be able to see social vulnerable populations. We also have the access equity mapping. So a 10-minute walk, we've got that map there. So you can see there in that kind of pinkish color of areas that don't have access to those recreational sites. Quality equity, we did a sampling of 40 different park sites across the city of looking at their conditions. So ranging from kind of the pink, the lower overall score, average score within that district, up to green. And then the, the map to the right is the economic equity, where we looked at the capital spending per capita across the last 10 years. And so again, you can start to see that there are differences. And what you will also notice is that those differences tend to line up in the same geographic area, which is exactly what we did with this composite equity analysis. So we took those four maps, we stacked them on top of each other, and we were seeing where those elements were, were starting to line up. And so what we have here are, it's a kind of a heat map that ends up getting developed. And so this is a tool for identifying where priority investment projects should be going. That's the purpose. It's just a tool. It's not saying, like, this is the only tool to be making those decisions, but it's a very important and a useful tool of looking at all of these factors of equity to be able to then make those decisions. We understand that resources are limited. And so where are you going to be focusing first, and to be able to make the biggest impact? So from those, that analysis, from that equity, from those conditions, from what's currently going on, what does this mean for recommendations? What it means is that we've got a lot of recommendations for you. There are definitely a lot of needs associated with the park system, starting with just improvements to the existing. You've got to take care of what you have. There is a backlog of deferred maintenance. There's also parks amenities reach the end of their life cycle. You need to be replacing playgrounds every, certainly every 30 years, 20 years is, is really what their life cycle is. So being able to keep up with what you currently have. But then also, I remember that, that amenity level of service, there's shortfalls of building new amenities and expansion of the system also. Virginia Beach is lacking some facilities that are usually seen in a city the size. Nature centers, like more splash page, archery range, just some other different types of facilities to be able to offer the, the full range of opportunities for citizens coming in. Also looking at, so that's the amenities, the facilities, but then the parks themselves. So there are undeveloped parks and underdeveloped parks within the city. There is also need for additional park land. We're taught, we saw some of those areas where there aren't the parks nearby, the recreational access for that 10-minute walk, for the, there's a need for that additional citywide park. So new parks are being needed. And then also, the city has some projects on the books, like the Virginia Beach Trail, that also require funding. So we put together a cost estimate. If everything that we identified in the plan as a need was to be acted upon, it would be 837 million plus. And that is in $20,24. And that number, I can guarantee, is going to be higher by the time all of this gets built. Like, one, it's all going to be staged out, but then you know how the market is with materials, with labor, with inflation coming in. So that, it's going to cost more, but the intention with this number, with this cost estimate, is to allow the city to start planning, to allow the department to start planning within an order of magnitude, to be able to start addressing these, these many needs that we've identified in these different categories. But I also told you that the purpose of this plan is to be actionable, to be able to take that prioritization. We don't just want to say, ah, it's overwhelming, there is so much. It's not overwhelming. It is addressable. And so we developed a prioritization. There were many different factors that we had that went into this prioritization, and I'm going to walk you through a couple of those different categories that were called out in the, the cost estimate for what we identified as the priorities. And so, starting with the amenities. So again, through the lens of equity, we did an equity scoring associated with all of the improvements to the existing parks, as well as with new amenities to be built. We looked at about how we would address those different categories of equity. Also, its feasibility, the cost associated with it, and then developed a priority scoring, and then ranking. Again, this is just a tool to be able to help make decisions, but you need some tools to be able to help look at all of this data. We also looked at those parks. So there, the city has approximately 40 undeveloped and 40 underdeveloped parks. So these are already land that's been purchased, potentially in areas of need, and so identifying which of those over 80 parks to be focusing on. So what we did is that we had taken, we took that, that composite analysis map that I'd showed you earlier, and we located all of the un- and underdeveloped local parks and citywide parks. And we looked for where there was proximity, for where there was a park site already adjacent to an area that has a need for a park, for investment, for access. And we have a list of then those prioritized parks for both the underdeveloped and the undeveloped parks. Some of them, the department is already investing in. The Level Green Park is undergoing a $4.5 million renovation currently, which this is one of the priority parks, so that's great. And the types of amenities that are going into it will end up making it a citywide park, addressing some of that need. So this list of approximately 12 different parks is certainly a shorter list than the 80 parks from the un- and underdeveloped, but even focusing within, okay, you can't build 12 parks, build out 12 parks all at once, we would recommend that the citywide parks be the focus first. They are more expensive to build, but they also have the type of amenities that have the greatest shortfall, and they also end up serving a larger population because they are a destination-level park that they, there is more population that gets served. If you're only going to be building one park, let it be a citywide park. Hopefully, you're not just going to build only one park. But let it be a citywide park to be able to serve additional, serve that additional need, fill those shortfalls that we've identified. Also, one of the recommendations was additional land purchases. We are looking just at local park, citywide park. There was also recommendation for natural areas, that, that recommendation is more associated with a, a different set of analysis in terms of the environmental vulnerability, as well as just the, the potential opportunity for whether or not a parcel comes up. So we did the analysis. Again, this base map is going to look kind of similar. We're using this tool that we developed for, for those priority need areas. With this one, we overlaid it with different districts have different, had different shortfalls of acreage within these different parks. We had that overlaid. And then within that, we circled areas within each district that have a need for different types of parks. And so what this means is it can be a guiding factor for the department if a parcel, if an opportunity, partnership opens up within these areas that we've circled, that they, they should pursue that. Not necessarily that a park needs to be in every single one of those circled areas, because the different districts do have different shortfalls, depending on the size of the park. You might be addressed with just one park, even though maybe three areas were circled. But it starts to give some planning resources. This is a high-level analysis. It's a very large, large city with a lot of needs, so how to start directing future, future decisions. And so that's what this report is of, another tool to be able to guide those future decisions. Connected with the equity, environmental equity and access equity. So Virginia Beach is blessed with a lot of water access, 35-plus miles of beaches, and then a lot of other inlets, streams, lakes, ponds through it, but not everybody actually has access to the water. And so this had come up a lot on the public surveys, as something that was important to people. And from an equity perspective, it's also important. So what we looked at here were potential water access points within existing parks, whether they be developed, underdeveloped, or undeveloped, sites that were potentially on a water body, and that could be developed either for viewing, for fishing, for a canoe kayak launch, for a boat launch, that these are potential sites based on, again, the needs, but then proximity to other water access sites. And that, and that where there's a gap. So we went through, started with the overall cost, went through the prioritization for, in different categories. And so what we have here is the prioritized cost recommendations and associated projects over the next 15 years, separated out into a short-term, midterm, and long-term category. So, short-term, we are focusing on that safety and accessibility, starting on that deferred maintenance, lifecycle replacements, but then also addressing those needs, those very valid needs from the public in terms of building some of those high-priority new amenities. Midterm, we're still, it's a, it's a big backlog in terms of the, the life cycle and maintenance needs. So still working on that, still working on the high priority, starting to get into the mid-priority items. And then long-term, those continued development, and then also looking into parkland acquisition. Though, of course, if a site comes up nine years out, you should jump on it because those opportunities are opportunity-based. So, that's still, still a lot of money. So how, how is it going to be funded? The, we've got a list here of current strategies that Virginia Beach is using, but we're going to be needing to explore some additional strategies in order to address, address everything that's in this recommendations. So some potentials, tourism investment program. There's a potential for a bond referendum to be able to address this. And then another opportunity might be increasing the outdoor incentive real estate tax allocation to this. This, in the 2023 public survey, the department's been thinking about a bond, and whether or not that would be possible, what it would look like if the public would be open to it. So in the 2023 public survey, the department asked questions to the public to be able to gauge their reaction and the, kind of the temperature, kind of taking a reading of, of what's going on. So in this, in this question, asking if a Parks and Rec bond referendum were to be passed, what percentage would be allocated to these different categories? So you can see that the recreation center and deferred park maintenance, so taking care of the existing facilities, are pretty much neck and neck. People do really like the recreation centers, they value it, but they also value the parks. So both of those are important. Coming down through and, and ranking percentage, park enhancements, the Virginia Beach Trail, undeveloped parks, and then the Centerville Recreation Center. Centerville Recreation Center is a discreet individual project with a, a smaller number of users associated with it. So it's kind of understandable that that one, that one's further down. The next question was like, okay, so those are the general categories, but how supportive would people be about paying additional, additional tax, and what level of tax they would be open to? So you can see that 46% of people are very supportive or somewhat supportive. So that's nearly half. And then about a third of people said that, that they're not, they're not really supportive of that. And so really, it's that 21% in the neutral category that was going to take some more, some more reading, some more, some more understanding to be able to see what they are looking for in terms of, is it specific projects? Is it special interest groups? What, what are they interested in, in that 20% of the neutral that would sway them towards supporting a bond referendum? The third question that was asked was what level of, of tax increase would be supported? And so this was rather an interesting one. Of 33% said that they would support the, just a one cent increase, but the next most popular response, at 31%, was two cents. So you have kind of two, two camps here of like barely anything versus like, yes, this is really important, we want to be stepping up and taking care of it. But what this also means is that, that we have, so everyone who is 2.5 cents, like they would support any increase, all the way up to 2.5, and same with the two cents, that they would be supporting any increase up through there. And so what that means is that if a 1.63, so with that one, we would get, we would get all of, some quick math in my head here, about 50% of people, if we're kind of dividing that one and a half cents line, about 50%, a little more, would be supportive of approximately a 1.63 increase, which would be providing funding of $150 million coming in. So with that, process of what we went through, recommendations, and then the cost. So at this point, I'd be very happy to take questions.
Okay, first, for Rosemary and Chandler.
Thank you, Mayor Dyar. Thank you for the presentation. Very thorough. First observation on your equity, access equity, population slide. Guess kudos to staff, city council, because for the yellows, it appears, so for paved trails, it looks like, of course, with the VB trail announcement, we're making headway there. Pickleball, making headway there. Playground, I'll discuss that there. Skate spots, it was just at Woodstock Skate Park yesterday with my children. Looks like we're invested in that, and festivals and different things for the action sports and facilities. Soccer, we just did a big investment last week, or I'll support that, or two weeks ago. Soft trails, is that?
Like hiking trails.
Hiking trails, okay. And then splash playgrounds, I guess, important for a lot of children and young families. Last April, because I, I just can't help but, I guess I'll go to the survey, because I guess this is the challenge when we go out and ask the public, and then it doesn't necessarily align with our priorities and the decisions. It's interesting that when we actually gave the public what they would like to see, what they would do, because we're going into our budget talks, I don't see anywhere here Rudy Loop, and we got 60 million that's coming up. But I do see rec center modernization, deferred park maintenance, park enhancements, undeveloped parks. And about two years ago, I was at a breakfast, and former Councilman Linwood Grants came, and he was saying that, I guess, when you all first started this, we could have funded the majority of parks being, that were underdeveloped with like $20 million, but they're just... the majority of parks being that were underdeveloped with like $20 million, but there just wasn't enough money there. When you look at the bond referendum, the survey as well, that's the challenge when you go to the public and ask for what they would like to see. I don't know if we would be able to put that money towards what they're asking for. And analyzing the prioritized recommendation costs, again, the manager's recommended $60 million for Rudy, the public hasn't necessarily asked for that. I know we directed them to design, but if we just took existing facility improvements, that's $7 million. Amenity construction, first five years, $11 million. Undeveloped parks, $5 million. Underdeveloped parks, I mean, that's $26 million, roughly half of what we would be investing in Rudy, which will not serve the entire city, but it goes back to your equity. It's based in a specific area that we put a lot of money into, which would be the ocean front, which is important. But again, you brought up equity. And my question, maybe the manager can help me because this number is just kind of taking me by surprise because we're saying we're running out of land. Can you just help me with this 191 million for new parkland acquisition and development? Can you give me a couple of examples of what that number includes?
Yes.
Yeah. Please.
I would say for this, this is just an academic empirical document, right? I don't think anybody's saying that any of these things are going to be brought for for council to actually review and consider. I think this is basically the ideal optimal way to build a park system in Virginia Beach. Go ahead.
That's correct. That's really just looking, that number is is a ballpark estimate on if you wanted to get to greater equity in the amount of parkland per capita within the districts, it would take that much acreage to do so in some of the districts that don't have as much parkland as it is now. So it's really an exercise in terms of, it's not like we went out there and said, is that land even available? But then that's how many acres it would take and the ballpark cost it would take in this day and age to do. That's really what that's saying.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, work.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick question. Can you go back to prioritized undeveloped parks? And the North, Sea-Tac North Park, is that an existing park or is that a new park? And thank you for the presentation too, Val.
In terms of the existing Sea-Tac Park?
Yes, there's rec center and then there's the Sea-Tac Park.
Yeah, Sea-Tac Park is a developed park.
Okay. What is the LEDA?
The LEDA site. The LEDA site is what we would call, I would call that undeveloped. It's really just a grass field right now, used for practice football and some other open space activities.
Okay, Rose Mary and then Jennifer, then Michael.
I would just ask if you could send this out electronically because some of this is a little hard to see and then we can enlarge it and.
Certainly, we'll get the entire thing out. And also, the the big glossy report isn't finalized yet, but once we have that, we'll also post it online and get you a copy of that as well. The presentation will get out to you right away.
This is a fantastic way to really holistically look at, you know, all of this because it's very complicated because we're the best, but we got a lot of resources and that sort of thing. And did the Washington Square property fit into in this at all because that was just recently acquired?
That was, and so that's really not included in this, but that will now go into our inventory. We're just, the city is just about to close on that piece of parcel, that property, and that will then go into our undeveloped category. So Tristan mentioned we have 40 undeveloped park sites. You can just say we now have 41 undeveloped park sites.
All right, well, thank you. It's a fantastic report.
Okay, Jennifer, Michael and Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all of this. So thank you for the presentation, Mr. Kirschman, and thank you for coming. So in the last budget for reconciliation, we each had $150,000 that we could spend in whatever way we thought could benefit our district. So in collaboration with the city manager and with Mr. Kirschman, Parks and Rec, we identified an underdeveloped park. And so spent, we as a body spent $150,000 to upgrade Oak Springs Park. And so can you give us an update on the status of those upgrades and?
Sure. I think there's a picture in the very beginning, I'm trying to go back to it. For, I'm sorry, can you get to the?
Just five minutes.
So there was, there was a picture of one of those enhancements just just from a couple weeks ago. So correct, so really what we do with those funds is we look at some of our underdeveloped parks. And really, an underdeveloped park is where we have a park that's got a lot of open space, a lot of land, and it might just have a playground. And so, yes, it is serving the population out there that has kids, you know, ages five to 12 that might want to use them. But that's a very small portion of the of the public. There's a lot of good research out there that shows that once parks have at least four recreational amenities, the usage just just skyrocket. It's more and more people use them more often, and they're gaining all the health and social outcomes of using the parks. And so with those funds, we looked at underdeveloped parks and we added an amenity to them, such as the outdoor fitness equipment, so that adults now have a recreational amenity in the park.
So stay tuned for.
Yes, yours is coming.
All right, Michael and then Josh and Barbara.
Thank you. Well, Jennifer said you might know where she's going and you probably know where I'm going too, at least in part. I've got a couple of comments to make. I know the answer to this and I know you know the answer to this, but I want to hear you say it. What's the number one most visited park?
Right now, I would say Mount Trashmore. Even by our 2023, every survey we get at, that's the number one park they say people go to the most often.
Number one park, and it's by a lot.
Oh, it's, yes.
It's really is by a lot.
Centrally located, has tons of amenities, the walking trails, the shelters, the skate park, the hill, the same volleyball, fishing.
District three.
Yes.
Is that in District three?
It's in District three.
Amazing.
It's iconic park.
Iconic park. We all have great memories of Mount Trashmore. I know I used to look at it when we were throwing quarters in the toll. I'm too soon for it, so it goes back a long way. But the reason I'm bringing it up, though, is that we all love Mount Trashmore. But one thing that I think, and this is incredible work and very, very technical and thoughtful and comprehensive, but at the same time, when we have discussions about this and we move into the future about how we establish the priorities and how they're funded, we need to kind of check our own gut and have our own understanding about what the actual needs are. I'm using the point of Mount Trashmore because it is the most visited park in the city. It is an iconic landscape and city park. It's very important for for Virginia Beach, for our, not only our recreation, but our health, but also our identity. I mean, Mount Trashmore is part and parcel of Virginia Beach. And yet, as special as it is, you talk about establishing world-class parks in other parts of the city, and I'm supportive of that. But Mount Trashmore should be world-class too. And I do think that it's underperforming. We do have some challenges there. We have some parking challenges. We have some facilities challenges there. There are limitations to what you can do based on the geography for sure.
Correct.
I know there's great upgrades coming to the playground. We have some issues with the Burt Skate Ramp that I know you're well aware of that will be addressed soon. But the point I'm making is we need to invest in the things that we know are working and are working really well and that are part of our, part of our community and part of our culture. And Mount Trashmore, I think there's no greater example, but there are other examples too. And so I think that those, that has to be integral to the conversations that we're having. And I could go further to share that, you know, I could tell you what the needs analysis is just from five years of public service. I can tell you that we need to improve the Sea-Tac Park, including possibly parking and some amenities. I can tell you that the Bayside, Great Neck, and Princess Anne Rec Centers need modernization and renovation. I can tell you that Sea-Tac Rec Center needs, we need to have a plan to address Sea-Tac. And I mean, I could just go on. And so these are the things that we already know what the answers are based on what we have heard back from citizens. And that has to be also a measure in addition to very specific analysis. We just know. I just know from the people that use Mount Trashmore Park that they'd like to see it connected to VB Trail. I just know that we need better parking there and that our trails could be improved and the amenities better. So we already know what the answers are. It's just a matter of finding the funding and the will to do that. I think it's very important. The other thing, and I think you brought this out, but I want to use another park, for example, Scarborough Square, because that's a neighborhood that has been experiencing some challenges and they're, and they're very, they really love their park there. And yet, there are some areas where that park could be improved and the city could make a very proactive steps to demonstrate our support for that community and all of the, some of the challenges that they specifically are dealing with by investing in that park and by investing in that neighborhood, by investing in that park.
It's a prime example of a neighborhood park that could use an influx of investment to get up to where it needs to be.
Possibly the most prime example, in my opinion. Two of the most prime examples are in District three. Thank you. Thank you, Josh and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for the enlightening presentation and your work around a topic that I think so many of our residents really care about. I mean, we hear all the time how people value open space and parks and access to parks, particular neighborhood parks. And I know we have a policy now that any new neighborhoods that are built may be within walking distance to a park. And I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, looking at this map, and I know we all serve our districts and are accountable and elected by the folks who, you know, reside in our districts, but we also make decisions, all of us, that impact everybody. And I think we're also accountable and responsible to people on a citywide basis. And I look at the western part of our city and the southwestern part of our city that they have a tremendous amount of need relative to some of the other places in our city. And I think we really, really need to be sensitive to that. And that may just be by extension because these are some of the older neighborhoods in our city that were built before the policy existed on, on having, you know, parks in close proximity to neighborhoods. But I think we've got a, we've got a responsibility to address that. And I think, you know, Districts four, seven, and 10 really stand out here in terms of, you know, where we ought to prioritize giving safe spaces for children and families to congregate. I think of one neighborhood that, you know, we share, Councilwoman Ross Hammond in Aragona that does not have a park. They are our oldest, one of our oldest neighborhoods in Virginia Beach. And I just, I appreciate the good work on this. I hope that we can keep it in mind. And as Councilmember Belucci says, you know, we've got to, we've got to put our money where our mouth is on these items and find ways to, find ways to, you know, to help alleviate the, I guess, the disparity that exists, you know, with respect to parks in our city. But on the survey data, can I ask, was this statistically valid and to what do, what percent accuracy?
95% confidence level, plus or minus two and a half or 3%. Same as the other three surveys. We use the same firm, ETC Institute.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Barbara and then Sabrina. And then Amelia.
Just to talk a little bit about a meeting that we had earlier today with Michael and so forth, with the, regarding the open space program. And we're really now into what I guess we're going to be calling Phase Two of the Open Space Program because the first phase started in around 2000 when we started the Open Space Program. And with that program, there was a definite figure of $50 million that this program would have to acquire properties for open space. And that was bonded and so forth. So they reached that amount in about 2015 or 16, and we have not really acquired properties since then. But I think a lot of these properties that you have now is underdeveloped or undeveloped parks or properties that were acquired as open space by the Open Space Program, but then have not had funding to be developed.
Correct.
Because the criteria in that first phase of the Open Space Program was acquiring properties for parkland. And the main criteria that was determined when they were evaluating whether a property should be acquired or not, we're trying to make certain that properties were acquired where there was not the ability to have access to a park within a 10-minute walk. And so now that you've got these properties that are acquired as open space, but they need to be developed, if we're going to be utilizing some of the dedicated funding sources and use some from open space, if that could be earmarked particularly for developing open space properties, I think that would coincide with the intent of that program. Now we're in the Phase Two of open space, which was re-upped in the 2223 budget, and still acquiring for neighborhood parks, but also a main purpose for acquiring property now is to be stormwater and resilience. And so that will be being looked at as a chief reason for acquiring certain property. And of course, those properties all have to come from willing sellers. We don't go out and take property or that's not done. It's all willing sellers. But again, you know, if we going forward are looking to be able to utilize some of the open space funding for maintaining these properties, that's important because that was not, I think particularly this last iteration, we specifically said it was for acquisition. We might need to also clarify that that funding can be used to maintain or develop undeveloped or properties acquired for open space. So that's something that we do want to look at going forward. But also the question of whether going forward, we're looking at PGO only with this funding or if it can be bonded. And of course, that would make a big difference in the amount of property that could be acquired. The first iteration, it was very clear at the start that that was to be bonded, bonded, and those bonds will be fully retired in 2028. But going forward with the program now, is it going to be PGO or is it going to be bonding? It would make a big difference in what can be done. So I think going forward with this program and the open space program and money, that's how you acquired these properties was through open space. And now it's making certain that they are utilized in the fashion that they were intended when they were purchased. And now going forward, how do we deal with that to make sure we're in compliance with what we said? But when you think that this is less than a half a cent of a penny on the meal tax, it's acquiring a heck of a lot of service for the people. And so when they're, when you're paying your meal tax, you like telling people, well, maybe you don't like paying the meal tax, but part of the money, half of 1% of one cent or a little less than that goes for open space purchases. And now if we can clarify that it would also develop them, I think that would be a good, a good message to go forward.
Okay, Sabrina, Amelia, Rose Mary.
Thank you. I know that in terms of addressing disparity across the city, I believe it was last year, I brought up doing a possible referendum to address those disparities, not just in District Seven, but all over the city. And so that's when there was a proposal to do a study or survey, excuse me. And I believe during the time I was advocating for the referendum, I was told it wasn't the right time. The body was saying it wasn't the right time. So in terms of that survey, Mr. Duhaney, is that, are these some of the results from that survey connected to the bond referendum or is that a separate presentation that we?
This is, this is, this is in response to the item that council adopted in the focus action plan for us to do a survey and get a sense of the public's appetite for doing a bond referendum for park-related infrastructure. So this seeks to address that. Is that correct, Mr. Kirschman?
Correct. So we were right in the process of getting ready to do the, this survey that we do every two years. Same survey that assesses the public's need for recreational amenities, et cetera. We put a stop. et cetera. We put a stop to it. It hadn't gone out yet. We added these three questions to get timely data in response to that inquiry on, well, what is the appetite for public? Would they be open to this? And this is the results of those three questions from the survey.
Okay, so that, that's the survey that I requested in connection with the bond referendum. Okay, so there's no other presentation that we will have on that?
No, this is the, the information that council did.
I just wanted to clarify that. So some of the information in terms of equity is what we've already known. District Seven, certainly it, I'm not surprised to see it because it's certainly something I've advocated for, for the Rec Center in District Seven. And District Ten, of course, was before, you know, the redistricting of that district was a part of District Seven. So I'm not surprised to see that. I'm just looking at the last two slides here. It looks like there's support to support a bond referendum. And and because this is a public survey and we've gone to the public and the public has said this is what they would support and that's what they want. And so my comments are just in terms of getting to the bond referendum and getting it on the ballot for this year, I would certainly like to see that happen. And that's the reason that, you know, I certainly addressed it last year was to try to address some of the disparities across the city in working with the staff. And their suggestions was to add all of the needs, including the Rec Center, and give the public a chance to weigh in. It looks like they did. And so getting the question or the bond referendum on the ballot would be good to, as we say, if we do want to address those disparities, that's a good way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, Amelia and Rosemary.
Well, I want to thank you again for this entire survey because the first part that hit me is equity, environmental, putting it all in because having sat through an environmental mapping lecture and realized getting the trees, getting all of that foliage, how it's important to the health of people, no matter what, the health counts. So I'm glad you did something like this. I also noticed, like Councilman Showman was mentioning, the part we talked about for this Aragona Park, they're looking at not only the younger people, but those that are older. How can they also, you know, use some of this to help them feel healthier? So I thought this was really great, and I liked the way you not only presented your case, but you showed us opportunities to look at possible funding strategies because there's no need saying something and you don't have that answer to it. So I like that, you know, that was included. And I know this is something moving forward. It's not happening right tomorrow, but this is important for us to think further. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Rosemary.
Clarifying question. So I think what Ms. Henley mentioned about utilizing open space money for the undeveloped parks is a fantastic idea because it, it would be the continuation of why we bought the open space, and it would be, would be to make a park. We've got 41. By the time we do the 41st, I don't think any of us will be here at this current rate that we're going. So if if we wanted to go down that path, I guess this is a question for Mr. Stiles. Do we need to change the ordinance of what that money can be used for, or could it just take council action?
I think it'd just take council action. You know, so I think you'd have to change, pass a ordinance to change the purpose of the dedication and maybe to create another dedication that'll be for parks development using point two cents or whatever, point two percent.
Right. Well, we, we certainly don't want to take all of it. I mean, we still want to, but but maybe to divide it up. And is it possible that we can look at this and figure out what would be a good division of that dedication?
So you remember, council did ask us to look at all the dedications and then to figure out what obligations and liabilities they currently have
Right.
in correlation with the revenue it takes in. And then to give council some advice on what that looks like. And then also part of that to talk about the arts as well, right? So I think Kevin and I are hoping to have that information to council in this week's package, this week's package. That'll give you a sense of the full picture of all your dedications and what capacity is available there for redirection purposes. Council could take that information and council could make a decision and maybe possibly give us some guidance on some, all, or part of it during reconciliation. Or council may want to delay some of this action and then as council has that CIP retreat and gets a sense of the whole CIP need, give direction to staff on how best to handle the global CIP. You know, so we'll have that information to you this week and council can decide to do small bites at the apples in reconciliation or take it, take it up as part of CIP retreat or have another conversation about redirecting it for taxpayer relief, as some folks have mentioned.
But it does make a lot of sense to tie in the open space money with actually developing the park, which is what it was intended for to begin with. And who knows when we'll get to those 41, maybe 42 parks. It's just, I don't see how we possibly do it without another, other means. So I think that'll be a good discussion. And then I think Ms. Henley, to bring you up.
Okay, Barbara.
Just two points of clarification. On, on that, the Open Space Committee will be looking at this and making a recommendation to the council. Because again, with the Phase Two of that program, we do need to determine, and this will be up to council, whether, whether they are doing everything on a PGO or if it's to be bonded, which would make a really big difference in the amount
Oh, yeah.
that can be acquired. But you have to realize that property has gotten more expensive since that first iteration because now we're looking mainly at infill properties and they're going to be more expensive. So all of these things, I think, have to be looked at, and that will be a part of it. But I think we'll be coming forward with a recommendation to you. On these, another clarification, on these questions, as far as the bond referendum, am I reading this correctly? This third question, which was, what is the maximum amount of tax increase that you would support? That only shows the people who said they would support it in a referendum.
That's correct.
So that's not from 100% of people. That's only the people who said they were either neutral or in supportive of a referendum.
That is, that is correct.
So the 32% of the people said that they would not be in support of, of this funding were not included in this chart.
That's correct, because
Okay. So that's only two-thirds of the people
Yes.
who were even shown there. So that makes a big difference, I think.
Okay, Chris.
To Councilwoman Henley's point. Patrick, what was the approval for the bond referendum for the stormwater percentage?
The bond referendum was 73% of the public approved, increased the taxes for the flood bridge, flood detection program.
So 27 didn't.
God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Work.
Just one final kind of comment on this conversation is that, you know, a week ago, we had a great presentation from schools about their budget, and we're in the budget process right now. So, I mean, this is a great presentation. There's so many needs around the city that we need to balance out. And I think that, to me, the upstart of this conversation is perhaps looking at some of the dedicated funds for some of these projects that were used in, in our budget and going forward with this, with, with parks and rec, perhaps, as well as, you know, the tip fund for Rudy Loop. That's what's going to fund the $60 million for Rudy Loop. So that should, that's from the tip fund, not the general fund. So there is a distinction there. We also have a question about the aquarium. And we're just, we're going to hear about budget presentations here in a minute. So it's a lot to balance, but I think being creative and looking at this is the best way to look at it.
Okay. I just want to thank you very much. And tell you what, I'm heartthrust even thinking of another city that has a robust park system like we have. And the fact that you have reached the gold standard in national recognition, you know, I think it bodes well for, you know, just having the reputation for the quality of life that we have in Virginia Beach. And you folks are very smart.
Indeed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we're going to start continuing, continuation of the budget presentations. We're going to start today with the City Treasurer's Office. Our treasurer, Lee Henderson.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, members of council. Thank you for having me today. I will try to be very quickly in my presentation. I don't have any really large asks. This is just kind of informative of what's going on in the City Treasurer's Office. So we have 76.6 full-time employees and a budget of $8.4 million. I added an extra area in this pie graph this time as we are designating some IT expenses are significant in our budget this year, but the majority of our budget, 78%, is covered by salaries and fringe benefits. We have a slight increase from our budget from last year to this year. And I think at the last week's meeting, Kevin was talking about how some of those IT costs have been transferred out of the IT's budget and then put into individual departmental budgets. So we had almost a half a million dollars come over to our budget. We did make some significant cuts in our budget based on the city manager's requests for saving money for us this year. And the majority of our savings or cost cuttings came from contracted manpower. And those are funds that we use to augment her staff during tax time or additional busy times. Just a little bit of statistics about what we do in the Treasurer's Office and the volume that we have going on is we've taken almost 2.5 million payments in the last calendar year. It includes almost 20,000 payments that we take over the phone where our cashiers talk with our citizens, walk them through the process. They don't have to come into our office. It may be an immediate payment or that they don't want to use an online payment. Includes 1.2 million dollar, or 2 million electronic payments. And we've seen that of the taxpayer payments, about 50% or more come through an electronic means. We're definitely serving our citizens, talking to them with every, every day, 173,000-plus citizen phone calls per year. And we've mailed 1.25 million correspondences, bills, and otherwise out to our citizens. And just to note that the City Treasurer's Office has relationships with every other city department as well. We assist with their banking, with their revenue recognition, with their credit card processing, and in many cases, their collection efforts. The last five years and this year will be our sixth annual unclaimed property event. This is a partnership we do with the Virginia Department of Taxation, or, yeah, Virginia Department of Treasury, I'm sorry, Unclaimed Property Division, where we partner with them to assist our citizens in finding uncash refund checks or dormant bank accounts and whatnot. And over the past five years, we've averaged returning about $232,000 per year back to our citizens. So it's a great program. I encourage you to take a look at the inserts that go out in the bills that are mailed in May, and it gives information on how to do this. The next bullet is a CIP that was completed last year to replace our remittance processing equipment. And this is how we get money to the bank. So I wanted to thank you for your support in that. Technology is very critical in our office, and we did accomplish that in a timely manner. I see also that the city manager included a portion of my proposal that I came to you last fall about to include a five-day waiver for the due date for penalty and interest calculations. And I would seriously encourage you to keep that in, as a factor in the budget. When I came to you about this back in the fall, it was in regards to hardships or where citizens had just forgot to pay their bill. And a 10% penalty the day after is quite stiff, particularly for real estate bills. But after we went through that season, after the presentation, after the tax season, when we sent out delinquent notices, particularly for real estate, what we found is the postal service did an atrocious job in the December timeframe period. And we had probably 70% of our calls related to delinquent real estate, real estate taxes were because citizens put their payments in a mailbox timely. And because of the volume that we had, I think that the majority of these citizens were truthful in their statements to us. And the postal services did not postmark those payments until days or week or more after that time period. And that was very tough on our office. We try to carry out our collection and our payment processing in a fair and equitable way, and we have to go by the postmark. So we worked with citizens, and I'm sure many of you received phone calls and emails about this situation as well. So we tried to work the best that we can under the laws and regulations that I'm bound to uphold, to work with these citizens to help them through this process. If we are able to waive the penalty and interest, we did so. So I think this request for the waiver period will assist with this process because as a local government, we don't have any control over the services of the federal government or the post office. I did also reach out to our Congresswoman to issue a formal complaint about what we were experiencing in our office. And it's my understanding that she, along with other representatives from Virginia, have asked the Postmaster, Postmaster General to look into these types of issues that aren't just for the city of Virginia Beach, but they're very broad in our community. You did, thank you very much, approve a CIP for me to implement an e-billing functionality. And we're currently in the analysis and requirements document phase, document phase of this project. So I appreciate the funding for that. And hopefully next year, we'll be in a better position, hopefully implementation or phased implementation. That's what we're looking at right now. We also have a CIP that we share with the real estate assessor and the commissioner of the revenue because technology is absolutely critical in the operation of our office. So we continue to work with IT and the assessor and the commissioner's office to assure our taxation programs meet our ongoing needs. For example, we strive to improve our technological capabilities, upgrade programs when needed in order to maintain our vendor support and evaluate whether standalone legacy applications can be integrated. We're currently working with the real estate software vendor in order to upgrade to the newest version where both the assessment and billing will be within the same .net platform. In the future, we'll be evaluating our technologies for our other bill types. So that's all that I have today. Hopefully, I was pretty quick and I'm happy to take any questions that anyone may have.
Hey, thank you. Any questions or concerns? You're doing a great job. Good stuff. Okay, I'm sorry, Work.
Well, thank you for the great period of recommendation. And I thank the city manager for incorporating that because I did hear from citizens and businesses about tax collection in December, and it was mail system. And we can always blame folks in Richmond for that. I want a general assembly with the mail, too.
Agreed.
Hey, great. Thank you, Wade.
Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that our commissioner of revenue, although not presenting, he's in the room as well. And usually whenever the treasurer and assessor comes together to present, since they all work collaboratively together, they always tend to support each other. But I just want to acknowledge that our commissioner of revenue, Phil Kellerman, is in here as well. At this time, we'll be joined by Sue Cunningham, my fellow council appointee. She'll be giving a briefing regarding the real estate assessor's budget.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good afternoon, welcome.
That's right. Good afternoon. Mayor, vice mayor, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm just going to talk to you about our budget here for the real estate assessor's office. So my organization or my department is staffed with 35 full-time employees. We're just a single division, and our operating budget is a little over $4.1 million for that. The Board of Equalization is a separate entity, entity that's tracked under my department financially. They are separate for us. They represent the second level of appeals for assessments within our office. They're just, they're an organization that's appointed by They're just, they're an organization that's appointed by the courts of five citizens, and again, if we can't come to terms of appeals within our office, the second avenue for citizens is to go to this Board of Equalization. The city funds a small salary or a small department, their budget of about twenty-five hundred this year. So my operating budget, similar to Lee's, is very heavy on personnel versus operating expenses. There is a big jump in my operating expense this year, but as you've heard throughout, it's because of an overture of funds moving from IT over to the inner departments. We also have some software support that increased that operating budget a little bit this year as well. For the Board of Equalization, again, a separate entity, they had an increase this year in funds. This board had five new members, so my board is totally new last year, and they've requested a security presence at all of our Board of Equalization hearings, and that's the increase in funds you see for their division. Again, similar to the treasurer's office, heavy on personnel. We're about eighty-two percent of my budget is for personnel this year. Some of our major changes this year, I'm fully staffed for the first time in a long time, I'm happy to say. We've hired three new appraisers last year, and I'm very fortunate that all of them came to us with licensure, so they're state licensed in appraisal, and we hired one new transfer clerk. I was also happy that I had the opportunity to convert one of our transfer clerk positions to a new analyst, real estate appraiser analyst positions, and I'm very happy that we were able to fill that with a real qualified candidate. Along with that, four of my appraisers who I hired pretty much with no experience have been very robust in their education needs and have gone through the state licensure and passed the exam and are now state licensed appraiser in Virginia. As Lee stated, for treasurer, technology is huge. Technology and staying current is one of the main helps for my department, and thank you very much, council, that you funded three large initiatives for me last year. We upgraded our property search tool for citizens that I think gives citizens a better platform to being able to search our real estate data and find information they need on their real estate assessments. Our mobile assessor tool, which allows us to connect to data while we're on site and in the field, made us more efficient and corrected errors there. We're also in the training stage of Appraise List, which is a mapping or a visual analysis tool that allows us to merge data with maps so that we can get a better idea of a larger overall picture of how we're doing with our assessments and where we can get better. Some of our initiatives that are underway, again, with collaboration with commissioner and the treasurer and the IT department, we're looking for a way to digitize our forms and to kind of make those user fillable online and also connect to our data so that we can use that information from the forms to directly connect to data so that it'll streamline our processes. Some of those forms that I'm thinking of are income and expense asks, appeal forms. If we can form, get those forms online and connect to data, hopefully it'll give us a better participation in that respect, and then it also allow us easier access for analysis once we get into that form. We're also trying to look at artificial intelligence. There's ways that, softwares that are out there that can scan data for us and probably do fifty percent of the input that's currently a manual entry for my staff right now, and I'm thinking in terms of deeds and documents. There's software out there that we're kind of taking a look at and seeing if the artificial intelligence can help us streamline that effort as well. And lastly, as Lee said, we're looking at our software modernization with, in collaboration with treasurer, commissioner and IT. We're currently right now in the phase of trying to start the analysis on that of what's it going to take, who's out there, who's available. Again, software and technology is paramount. Right behind employees in my office, you have to have a great staff, but then these tools and the things that are available today are upon us to stay current in that effort. So in conclusion, we're going to continue our pursuit of all of our goals this year in attracting training and managing the great staff that I have right now in order to provide quality service to our citizens, attaining, maintaining the most current software and technology. Again, the enterprise assessment that's going on right now is paramount in importance, and again, best serve our citizens to produce the accurate, equitable collection of over eighty-two billion dollars in real estate for the city. That's all I have for you. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Amelia.
Yes. Thank you very much.
I think it's outstanding, and you and your folks definitely provided most vital service throughout our city. Truth be told, we can't run a city without you.
I appreciate it. Appreciate your support, sir.
Chris, please.
Thanks, Mr. I just want to say congratulations on having such tough skin. You've been very responsive to all the emails that come through, and I know you take a lot of heat.
I appreciate it. It's an educational process, and we're here to serve. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we're joined by every city department's favorite council appointee, the city auditor, Lyndon Ramirez.
Hey, welcome, Lyndon.
I think he's just trying to keep me away, so butter of muck. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and esteemed members of city council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to prepare our, present our proposed budget. I do want to introduce my deputy city auditor, Gretchen Chudon, who's played an important role in preparing our budget today. So we are one of the smallest, and we do take pride of being able to do a lot with a few resources. We like to say we're lean and mean and not mean in the literal sense, but we do have eight FTEs. That is including myself and my admin. So basically, we have four on the audit side and two on the fraud side, and because of shifting needs and resources, which I will talk to a little bit later, we have had to shift those. So basically, I'm operating with three auditors and three on the fraud side. Okay? And our objective, I mean, our mission is to promote accountability and integrity in city operations. We've got a one point four billion dollar budget. While the other departments are spending it, we're trying to ensure that they are accountable and transparent while doing so. As far as our budget, we've got a, you know, a one point one-two million dollar budget, but ninety-four percent of that is personnel, benefits, fringes, and so forth. So we have a very, very small operating budget where we have any flexibility, and for the most part, that is spent on, you know, basic office supplies as well as our required professional training. In regards to major changes in initiatives, and I believe every year, we feel there's an increasing need for audits and investigative services with limited resources. Audits, obviously, we can only do what we can do with the resources. Investigations, we are required, whether there's one or a hundred by state code, to investigate all allegations of fraud, waste, and abuse that come into my office and determine whether those allegations are substantiated or unsubstantiated. So even if they do turn out being unsubstantiated, it does require resources. In regards to evolving risk associated with shifting priorities and emerging technologies, throughout, one of the major risks throughout the city, and I don't think we have to tell, you know, the council or management, is the high turnover in leadership and staff throughout the city. So whenever you're having high turnover, obviously, there's risk involved. We've had recent implementation of a new accounting system, a new time and attendance system, as well as the upcoming rollout of the new HR system. We've been trying to be value-added in the audits that we do conduct. Because we have limited resources, we do try to align not only with the council, but with management needs. And just an example, and this is, this is really just from the current year, and I believe some audits from fiscal year twenty-three, Atlantic Park CIP. We started reviewing that right off the bat to make sure that's, as we continue to expend money from the, for that project, that we have the controls in place. The voter registrar's office, we have been involved with them, looking at that process. They cited one of our findings and recommendations, and I'm glad to see that that appears to be coming into fruition regarding their building. But not only the building, we did look at, look throughout the last couple of elections, just the controls that we have in place to ensure that there is the safeguards, the integrity regarding our election process. The Virginia Beach Convention Center and the Sports Center, two audits that I presented, two audits that have resulted in changes. We looked at the city charter, that's going through a change. We've been working closely with the Virginia Beach Development Authority, Economic Development, EDIP, which has resulted in changes in their process, Virginia Beach National, Hearn Ridge, and Vanguard Landing. And as everybody knows, you know, our work with Vanguard Landing did help to finally receiving the final loan repayment back to the city. So we did recover the full amount of the two million, two million dollars. Housing and neighborhood preservation, we just completed an audit of that, obviously, a high council concern. Special events permits and application process, we've been working with Nancy and her folks. You know, we've looked at both something in the water and the beach at economic impact reviews, as well as the other festivals, looking at the ROIs and so forth. And this is with three auditors, okay, including myself, and, you know, I roll up my sleeves and get involved because we have to. We've got a backlog of projects, you know, some of them, hopefully, within fiscal year twenty-four, will be able to address the aquarium, amphitheater, other assets, mobile device management, business assessment process, farmer's market, leases, and various other assets throughout the cities. We try to be very agile and responsive. When Councilman Holcomb took over as the new sheriff, he asked us, could we look at the books? You know, obviously, as taken over as the new sheriff, he wanted us to come over and look at the internal controls, the accounting, the books, and so forth, because he was responsible for them. You know, I mean, we're very short-staffed. We already had booked a full audit lineup, but we try to be agile, responsive. VB CDC is another one that's not on the current audit plan. They're having issues. Their CFO just resigned. We did a lot of work. My office did a lot of work to, you know, to stand them up and get them to a position of fiscal, you know, strong fiscal ground, so we're going to have to go back out there to help with them. You know, and even within the last, last year, stormwater, ROI, economic impacts. So we have a long list of various audits, and I am proud to say that even with the short, the small number of resources, and you can look throughout the state, look at, you know, to our neighbors in Norfolk, you know, Richmond, that are, you know, smaller than us, they have almost double the amount of auditors. But yet, you know, we're still the model, just like the city, the model internal audit shop throughout the Commonwealth because a lot of those localities and cities benchmark to what we do. Okay? And because in regards to initiatives underway, because we are very small, I take pride of using innovative solutions to augment our available resources. Okay? We use contingency auditors. For example, healthcare claims, their contingency auditor, that contract falls underneath us. We are one of the only localities in the Commonwealth of Virginia that every year, we have a hundred percent of our healthcare claims, both city and schools, looked at. Other than payroll is our largest expense. Okay? We have used contingency auditors to look at our utilities, our cell phones, expenditures. We have one, we use contracted manpower. We have, we're down to one individual because when you're using the contracted, using contracted manpower, we're at the mercy of that individual wanting to work on a part-time basis. Okay? I believe we're one of the only departments within the city that used both the skill bridge and the military spouse fellowship program. Again, it's a temporary program. Okay? So we are being innovative to augment our resources. And as I mentioned, because of the increasing need for the fraud, waste, and abuse allegations, so we had four auditors and two on the fraud side, basically, we're working three and three. I've had to shift one of my auditors to help because when we provide you with the numbers and the audit committee with the numbers, and we will say we have, for example, fifty fraud, waste, and abuse allegations. Well, one allegation could involve twelve to fifteen city employees. Okay? And we've got a great city. We've got great employees, but as everybody knows, you know, there are some problem employees. It's the law of large numbers. You've got, you've got a big department. You're going to have individuals and employees that aren't always doing what they're supposed to be doing. Okay? So we have updated our, or we are in the process of updating our strategic, departmental strategic plan and of realignment to ensure that we are using our resources to the best of our ability to meet the growing needs. Okay? As always, we appreciate the support, and I do want to thank our city council liaisons to the audit committee, Councilman Shulman and Councilman Remick, who have joined the audit committee within the last year and, you know, appreciate and understand and support what we do, but all of the council, especially the mayor and vice mayor who made this office an independent-appointed office. So we want to thank you for your support, and that allows us to help fulfill our mission or help execute our mission of holding our employees accountable and responsible. Thank you very much, and I will take any questions.
Any questions or concerns? Amelia.
So much. In fact, I met one of his family members, and they're so proud of what he does for the city. I wanted to ask you just a little, can you tell me a little bit more about the DoD Skill Bridge?
Yes, the DoD Skill Bridge, and I do have, I do have an in. Well, I don't think that falls underneath him anymore, but my brother Len Ramirez, who is now the deputy or acting deputy city manager in Norfolk, he did oversee that program and introduced that to me, and I know there's other departments that utilize it, but basically, it is for military personnel transitioning out of the military that wants to get into the civilian workforce. And so the, the program allows them, I believe it's their final six months, still as an active-duty military and paid by the military to work in the private sector, government. So it's a win-win for all. There is no additional cost. We get to help, and those that are transitioning out get civilian experience, and in some, some situations, that leads to a career. civilian experience, and in some, some situations, that leads to a career, a career path.
That's very good for retention, you know, especially the military and so forth. Thank you. Now you know who I was talking about.
Yes.
So highly.
Okay, anyone else? You know, once again, another gold standard department we have here, you know, really, really good stuff, and, you know, the integrity you bring, and you, you are the understood person in this, you know, not the Commonwealth on how to do auditing and, you know, make us a better city, more transparent city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council at this time, Fire Chief Ken Privates will come and present the Fire Chief's proposed 23, 24, 25 budget.
KP, I don't know, but you're following the auditor. I never had to do that, I'm just saying.
We had a meeting with the auditor this morning.
No, Hutch, we did that in closed session.
Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, council members, Mr. Dehaney, thanks for letting me speak about our budget. I'm not traveling as big, as big as the sheriff did, but I do have my finance team, Jen Whitley and Alan Keck here, Deputy Chief Vance Cooper, and my executive assistant, Lori Skida, and then a few of my members I see scattered in the back. So thanks for letting us come and speak about the budget, and I just want to remind you, November, what park you build, or what school you enhance, or what city facility, it's our members who are protecting it, and so I need the staffing to make sure I can do that appropriately. But I'll get right into it. I know I have a short amount of time, so I will get right into it. This is our total FTEs that are proposed, it includes 17 new firefighter recruits. You'll get right to the point, it's not enough. Getting to the, my full FTE staff was 140 people, I have it in two, in two tiers. Tier one is 60 people, 51 for the fire training center, and, I mean, 51 for operations to support staffing, and nine for the fire training center. And that will get me able to deliver the mission as you're asking me to do it right now. That's not even to enhance operations, so. This is my budget. You can see the fire department's supported predominantly by the general fund, the FEMA grant, and the state training aids make up the other little pieces of it. Department operating budget, a large percentage of the change is in fire admin, which you've heard by the other directors mention, a million dollars of that is IT service funds, they're getting added to our budget, and then there's a $1.7 million increase for the new 17 FTEs that are proposed. I do appreciate all the work that's got to the, gotten to us, to the recommendation of 17. I really knew the budget team has done a hard job to reach that number for us. I'm just telling you that I, I think it needs to be more. And we're going to go into it a little bit right here. This is the major changes and trends that are happening in my department. You can see the voluntary callback on the light, the, the left, that's where the members are volunteering to work extra shifts, and on the right is when we're forcing members to stay, and mandatory holdover. Staffing our apparatus has become a serious challenge. Our employees are scheduled for 2,918 hours a year, much more than the 2,080 for the rest of the workforce. I have many members that are working an additional 2,000 hours a year, so we're approaching 5,000 hours of work time in my workforce. Department cannot continue to force our employees to work these unreasonable hours. It's not safe, it's not good for retention, and it's not good for their well-being. We know that employees are tired of working extra shifts, they're exposed to more toxins, they're sleep deprived, which increases the chances for substance abuse and behavioral challenges, and, and we're just at a breaking point. After...
Excuse me, Worth.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, can we go back to that?
Yep.
Maybe should, should say this for later, but while we're on this topic, can you, what's the difference between voluntary and mandatory? Mandatory means they're needed to complete the mission, and they're required, and that's, and then the price and the wage difference between the two.
So I have a minimum staffing of 130 people on duty every day in operations. We have people who volunteer to take extra shifts to fill the gaps when we can't reach the 130, and then the mandatory is we're forcing people to stay, they did not want to work, and they're forcing to stay. This is all done at an overtime rate, it's time and a half of their salary, so that all of that is overtime, and we, we go into some of the details here in a minute if you want to just bear with me, or you might get to... So after we submitted the city council staff report to city council, we were asked by the city manager to work with the Office of Performance Accountability to understand what was driving this, and we took a deep dive, a really deep dive into our trends. These charts represent the time that is not worked by our employees. The department has control of the top right dark blue piece of the pie, which is annual and flex leave, which has remained pretty consistent. The uncontrolled leave, the rest of the sections are outside of our influence. Items such as family medical leave, parental bonding, military leave, occupational injuries and illnesses are outside of our control, but reducing our ability to staff the apparatus, keeping us from delivering on our mission. You'll see the trend of resignations and retirements taking up a large percentage, roughly 50% of the change in my workforce. When we lose somebody, it takes us six to 12 months to replace them in operations. We can get them hired typically in four to five months, then it takes us six months to get them trained, so all of that time, there's a vacancy in operations. The red box on the top shows the calculated FT equivalents of the shortages. So you'll look, we started at 17, based on the number of hours that are not worked, and you, we're currently up to 51 FTEs. The math adds up to our recommendation, and that's how we got there. Our staffing and self-assessment came to the same conclusions, we, we did a self-assessment for internally within the department, we came to the same conclusions as Office of Performance Accountability, sorry. We, we also have an independent staffing being done by a third party. The, the initial draft that we've seen, which we hope to share the full report to you soon, says the same thing, we're short on staffing. And then I mentioned this morning, we had the meeting with the city auditor on some of our overtime challenges, and they came to the same recommendations, and I believe you'll be getting that report soon, is that we need additional staffing. This is a, this is my biggest challenge, and it is why we need to, we need to invest in, in people for the fire department. The, I know the comment is that we can't get the people. At the last, at the last hiring we did, we offered 63 positions, and I believe that we can handle another large influx if we can get, if we can get the body. In July, we'll have a new hiring list, and we're going through, the written test was Friday and Saturday. So we should be prepared to have a hiring list right around the start of the budget, and we'll be able to implement, to pull people into that workforce. Then just a last couple things I want to touch on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. We're still working with the Department of Health on the aging in place. We're still working with our public safety partners on securing a contract for behavioral health services, and as I mentioned, the staffing challenges are, are leading to some of the challenges we're having on the behavioral health side. We're working on the cancer screening, continuing the cancer screening, many of you were at the Crush Cancer event the other night, early detection saves lives. We need to continue the cancer screening for our workers, our, our members are at a much higher risk of cancer, even our turnout gear, we're looking to, you know, find a replacement for that, but we are at much higher risk, and we need to be able to continue the cancer screening, enhance our physicals. And the last couple points, that's a picture of Fire Station 5. I know in the CIP conversations you're having, there's a lot of discussion about what needs to be in the projections, but that's Fire Station 5, it needs to be replaced. Tanker 5 is in front of it, which is an apparatus that also needs to be replaced. So on the CIP sides, we're also seeing some challenges. But my ask for you is really just to try and help us achieve that tier-one staffing request, that will help me stabilize my workforce. We should see some relief on the, on the challenges for getting people, getting them off on when they're supposed to be. I really don't want to see them working more than 36 hours, I know a lot of them are working 72 hours straight, and it's just not sustainable. So that's my, my big ask for you this year, and if you can help us reach anything higher than the 17, I'll be very appreciative. Be happy to answer any questions.
Michael, and then Chris, and then Jennifer, and...
Thank you, G.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Ask two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
I'll start with the easy one first. Couple weeks ago, as you know, we had a public safety forum at Oak Creek Rec Center, and you attended and along as well with your colleagues, and I appreciate that very much. Something really interesting came out that's not on your list that I just wondered if you would share about, and that's the Bed Shaker Program for people who are deaf or hard of hearing.
Yes, our life safety team got a grant to buy alternative devices for waking people that are hard of hearing, and so they're actually, instead of a smoke alarm, it is a shaking device that can wake them up with other types of stimulation, and they've gotten the grant, they received the first round of the, the devices, they're working with the hard-of-hearing community, and hopefully they can get those out in the community and help protect some more lives.
Thank you. I didn't, I wasn't even aware that such a device even existed. I think about my grandmother who had hearing aids, when she took them out, she could not hear anything.
Yes.
There are a lot of people, and she would have been at risk if, you know, there had been a terrible situation, a fire in her house, and I think a lot of people fall in that, who are deaf or hard of hearing, and I think it's a great program, and I just wanted to just draw that out, that you all working on that, I think it's really fantastic.
Appreciate that. Our life safety team is always leaning forward to try and see how we better protect the community, and they saw this as an opportunity for us to get into an area that we weren't touching, so we're excited to get there.
I think, I think people who are deaf or hard of hearing are, would be at great risk if they were sleeping during a fire, and so I just think that's great, so thank you.
Thank you.
The other question that I have is about starting pay.
Yes, sir.
For firefighters, and transparently, I've heard from folks from the Professional Firefighters Association have expressed the same concern, and I wonder if you could unpack that a little bit further, in addition to the additional FTEs that you're requesting, what your reflections are about, about the starting pay? What, what I understand is being reported, if it's accurate, and I'm not questioning that it is or isn't, is that once you divide out how the hours are calculated, Virginia Beach has the lowest starting pay for firefighters of anywhere in the region, and we don't want to be the lowest of anything except for lowest taxes.
Yeah.
Not, not...
Best part.
Yeah, lowest crime rate. Taxes and crime rate, we want low.
I can touch...
I'd say this, I think our HR department is going to be working on a report to get the council to get you a better understanding of that. I don't think it's far off, I think you're probably five or six. I think the big thing to remember, city council, was, city council did its market salary survey right before great resignation happened, right? And basically, the world went crazy in terms of compensation to employees. Our data was based on pre-great resignation information, and a lot of the departments in the region did their market salary surveys after that, you know, because remember, when we did our market salary survey, we were 95 to 105% as it relates to where the cities were in terms of a pay standpoint, when everybody moved on top of it after we did ours, and they did it with the great resignation plus-ups as well, you know, so I think what we're seeing right now is that the 3% to 4%, to 5% that we've done after that has not necessarily kept us in line with the additional wage adjustments that they've done as response to their market salary surveys.
And then, of course, thank you, Mr. Dehaney, but then, of course, if we, when we take action on that, it's going to lead to other compression issues, so it's quite complex, but in the market, if, where you are contemplating adding 17 or more, could we even fill those? Would we even be able to fill those if our starting pay isn't competitive? And I think it should be competitive, more than competitive.
I think it's definitely a challenge that we're dealing with. We had 743 applicants sign up for our process, so we are seeing a little bit of a turn, you know, the numbers were, were lower than that last year, we're seeing a little bit of a turn, there are people coming back to the workforce. I do, to your point about the hours and the calculations, we use the 56-hour average weekly, the other cities are using 52 or, or something other than that. So there is some math that gets into the hourly rate, if you want to compare that specifically, but I, I believe we can fill those positions. We, we, we bring a lot to the, to the career of being a firefighter, we dedicate a lot of time to training, we, we have a little bit different organization than many, our equipment is very good, the council supports us with great equipment and facilities. So I think we can get the people in our department, but it is definitely a challenge, and we are not, when they compare just the math on the salaries, we are not where I'd love to see us be.
And your Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Chief Privates. Presentation very thorough. If you could go to the slide before this. I think this, we are dealing with real men and women. We can clearly see the uptick in those hours, and now you're 3X in your red box, but can you just help the public understand why we're seeing those resignations? Because I mean, that, that points to retention, and family life, fatigue, and as you know, better than any of us at the table outside of the chief. A hired man or a woman could lead to safety issues, so can you just talk to it?
Yes, sir. I know, council member, the, the HR does exit interviews, I also tried to do a lot of the exit interviews, I recently completed some exit interviews, and the number one reason that the person was leaving was the mandatory overtime was causing disruption in his life, and he, he felt that he could better manage it in a different career, so that was his, his number one, he also got transferred and didn't like that, but that's, you know, but that was the number one thing, a reason why he left was the mandatory just caused too much instability, and when, when he was supposed to get off, he didn't know if he was actually going to get off, and it caused childcare challenges. So that was just the one that I did this week, we had three resignations in the last week, so that's the one I did this week, and that was his number one concern. The, I think people are willing to try different careers now, it seems to be a trend that people are just willing to try things, so we're seeing people serve five or six years with us and then think about another career. I think the market has also caused some change in people willing to hop and bounce jobs a little bit more, so when I'm seeing the, the trends in resignations, it's just a mush of everything that's going on, really, in their life, in the workforce, competitiveness in the, in the salary ranges, so, yeah, there's not one, one key thing, but the last couple people I've spoke, spoke to said the mandatory overtime was causing them trouble.
We can help you get that pie sliced. Love to, and I follow the food quality.
Telephone poles for a living.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Loved it at Christmas with all the overtime hours, he didn't love it.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
We have Jen and Jock, Rosemary and Barbara.
My questions have been addressed, it was about recruitment and retention, so you're saying you need staff support, so how we can help that? So thank you for answering that, and I guess it's hypothetical, I don't know that we have an answer to it at this point, but I wonder how we do that at the 97 cent rate? So does this have an impact on our ability to perhaps increase salary and also expand, open up more positions to ensure that these firefighters aren't having to do mandatory overtime? Is that, can we do that at this rate?
That without changes right now, so it's adding an ongoing revenue resource to address this, right? So council could do that by, if you don't want to reduce the, if you don't want to increase the 97 that's proposed, council could look at ongoing other obligations and make a cut, or do other things, for example, dedications may be a consideration if council wants to do that, those are ongoing revenue sources, so council could redirect those, you know, council could ask us to take additional positions, so for example, this budget we cut, we cut 11 from human services and direct, honestly, we cut 17 in the 911 center in order to provide this here. The other component about it as well is just to consider that our fire personnel are the most expensive employees we have, right? You know, public safety salaries are traditionally higher than most, but it's not that, it's just all the equipment and the training that comes associated with it. For example, if this were, 1.7 million is for 17 firefighters, if this were for EMS paramedics, this would probably get you 30-plus EMS professionals, right? Based on, they're, don't have as many resource requirements or other ongoing requirements as it does for traditional firefighting, because of the dangers of the firefighting profession, but it'll be hard to keep the 97 without council looking at other ongoing revenue sources and possibly redirecting there, or council asking for additional cuts in FTEs beyond what we already provided.
Okay, before we go on, you know, if I can go back to my budgeting course, you know, contained within salaries, you know, wouldn't there be some trade-off with the fact that you're paying, you know, mandatory overtime and, you know, things of that nature? You know, does that factor into the equation?
You mean in terms of you add additional staff with that?
Yeah, in other words, if we leave the mandatory overtime and things like that.
I'd say, I never, and Kevin could probably, the budget director may want to come and speak on this, with fire departments, you never want to... speak on this, with fire departments, you never want to anticipate that, because their job by itself just generates overtime. Like, basically, is it a two-day shift, three-day shift, chief?
The cycle pay is automatically overtime in our cycle, yes, sir. And then holidays hit our overtime rate as well.
Yeah, so it's such a moving variable with fire departments as well, and also just note the city doesn't budget for overtime, we give them a courtesy amount, but because of how we fully fund the FTEs here, we traditionally use the vacancy savings generated from the entire organization to support the overtime of our public safety departments as well. It's just hard to really calculate, because if you're adding these 17 firefighters, you're adding, at least on each shift, probably 12 to 16 hours of overtime automatically for each firefighter, because firefighters, any shift they get, they just get overtime.
Okay. Hey, Josh, and then Rosemary and Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. DeHade, thank you, Chief Bravus. The questions I had in mind were already addressed, but one thing I just, I heard that I think deserves repeating, and I know you probably chose your words very carefully, but we just heard our fire chief say that they're at a breaking point. And I know, I know everybody around this table, that probably hit everybody the same way it did me, and we've got to find a way to make it work for y'all so that you're not in that kind of a position. And you and your firefighters run toward burning buildings when most people are trying to get out of them, and our public safety friends in the gallery here, our police department run toward danger, and I think we all share in the profound respect and admiration for the service you provide in keeping our citizens safe, so if there's a way, we need to figure it out. And if there's a number, I don't know what that recurring number is, that recurring expense, we just have to kind of figure out what that is and how to get there.
Just to, I think, and the chief or Kevin will probably clarify for me, I think to get to 60, that'll be about 5.3 million.
It's 3.3 more than this 1.7 that you gave me.
Yeah, so about 5 million. It'll be 3.3 additional, so about 5 million.
Yeah, about that 3.7 is the additional request.
Yeah, it's about 5.3, 5.4 million.
I will just...
Recurrent, yes.
I will just pile on to, in agreement, or at least, you know, the fact that it ought to be said and said again, that, you know, if we're looking for a tax rate reduction, these are the kinds of things that are impacted. And certainly, understanding and empathetic to folks who are, you know, struggling in terms of making ends meet, nothing in life is getting cheaper. So it's just unfortunately the way of the world.
And one more thing, Mr. Mayor, just to add it, just because if we're talking about adding firefighters, council needs to understand that I think, chief, every, or Kevin, every four to five years, we have to replace their breeding apparatus they have, right?
Our gear has expiration dates, so our turnout gear is 10 years, our SCBA is getting old, will need to be replaced, it has a 15-year lifecycle, but yeah, we are seeing equipment costs go up significantly as well.
So with every firefighter, you have to replace that in a basically stable period of time. We try to balance when we do that as well, so it doesn't all hit at one time, but that is a significant expense as well associated with the firefighters, because of the dangers of their job. Just want council to be eyes wide open, there's the personnel, but also then there's the equipment that you have to replace on a regular basis as well.
And Rosemary and Barbara.
Nine years ago, we started crush cancer, and we had our kickoff this week, and every year we have a spokesperson to sort of be the face of the event, and I'm so proud to say that this year is the Virginia Beach Fire Department. And it's going to give a lot of information to the public, because we get a lot of press from WAVI TV and all of that, through the dangers that the firefighters face, especially with cancer, because of the job that they do. And so I'm so excited about this year, and the event's going to be May 5th at the Cavalier Yacht Club, and we're going to have a...
It's a pleasure.
They're going to have a fire truck there, and I think they're challenging the sheriff's department.
He doesn't know that yet.
Oh, yeah. You don't think he knows? Ah, he knows. He knows there's a challenge, he's already on it, so it's going to be a really fun time, unless you see, you know, our sheriffs and our fire department. But we're so thrilled that you are stepping up to the plate on this, so thank you so much. And like I said, we had our event, and several members of the council were there, and Max spoke for the firefighters and did a wonderful job. So I guess my question to Mr. DeHade is, I know that 17 firefighters isn't what they asked was, but with what we just heard, what is the difference that these firefighters are going to, these 17 firefighters will make with the conditions that the current staff has?
What difference would it make?
Yeah.
I think the chief could probably best articulate...
You chose, I mean, you and your budget, y'all chose 17.
I think 17 correlates with the number of shifts, I think it's three additional, three additional shifts, but it's complicated, and he's, the chief's going to have to explain it, because it's not three shifts as we know it in a 40-hour work week, you know, so he'll be able to explain it, but it'll add, it's not what the chief asks for, you know, chief obviously wants more, but it'll add to their ability to do fire support and also the EMS work that they do as well, because they respond to majority, if not all, of our EMS transfer calls to help get our patients ready to be transported by EMS. You know, so chief, can you explain a little bit how the 17 will impact operations?
Yes, so the 51 for operations, it was, we have three shifts, A shift, B shift, and C shift. I was going to put 17 on each shift, was my original ask, and then when the budget figured out the number was 17 that they could produce, so what I would do is I'd take five and put five on each shift, and then put the two at the training center. So it'd be, I would get five additional bodies, one on each shift, so five on A shift, five on B, and that would be, the 17 would be 15 for ops and two for training, to try and supplement what the ask was. But to be honest, I don't think there'll be significant impact, I think there'd be very likely, very little impact. I'm hiring back between 12 to 20 people every day.
So I know sometimes we have a big ask, like, it has to be a phased-in approach, that you do so many at a time, and then eventually get to where we want to be, so maybe that's what the manager had in mind this time.
And that, and obviously, the chief's going to say, the chief wants more, you know, what I'll say as well is that this trend is, it actually started hitting us probably with Chief Hutchinson a little bit, but it started to become a little bit more definitive under with Chief Bravus, you know, so could get time to kind of manage it out a little bit as well. You know, I don't think the chief is, I don't think the chief is wrong in what he's saying as well, but, I mean, I would probably like to see if the 17 does anything to help support or stabilize things, you know, but the chief is, just wanted to make council aware that from his perspective, there's a divide, there's a gap there that he feels like needs to be addressed.
Barbara and Sabrina.
On the seventh slide. Initiatives underway, the first one is the Aging in Place program, and I heard about that last Friday, and it's, what I understand, it's grant-funded, and they're losing their grant, but could you talk something about what you all do as a part of that Aging in Place program?
Yes, it's a partnership with the Department of Health, and it's funded through a grant that they received, and what we're trying to do is assist people to live safely and comfortably in their homes. So we're part, we're working with our responders that are seeing people who are often having list, what we call lift assists, they've fallen and they need help getting up, but they're not really injured. We identify that group, we pass it off to the Aging in Place team, and they go out there and see if they can provide any resources, if they can help, if they could put trip control devices or handrails or something, and connect them with resources that will help them stay in their home independently a little bit longer. The grant is ending, but we just wrote a letter of support to ask for additional federal funding for that program so we can sustain it. It's a partnership with Department of EMS, Fire Department, and Health, Department of Health. Yep.
Certainly, the safety of people who are living at home alone is really important, and I guess this is where your smoke detectors and that kind of thing come in as well.
Yeah, the life safety team also does public outreach for the senior community to make sure that they can, we spend a lot of time in the schools with the youth, but also with the seniors to make sure that they can live independently and safely, and have the equipment they need, so.
Thank you for doing that.
Sabrina.
Well, I will ask the same question that I asked city manager when I heard about the numbers and just 17 staff being suggested for the department, and the question was, if we continue on the path we're on, not providing the needed staff, and I think you said folks are working 72 hours?
There are some instances where I've had people work 72 hours, I've tried to curtail that as much as possible, but we have had, in order to keep somebody from having to work, if I have a body that, a person that's willing to stay, we have made exceptions and allowed them to work, that's why I was at the auditor, because, you know, we had auditor was looking into our overtime, and so the recommendation from us is 48 is the max, they don't want anybody working, but we had had people work 72 hours straight to keep forcing somebody else to stay.
And even with those increased hours, how is that going to impact service and just people in general? What could that lead to?
We had, we had our, what I call officer in service last week, and the question came up about 72 hours, and my position is I would rather they never work more than 36, just because we know the health effects that this job does to you. Number one, the sleep deprivation, the exposure to toxins, being out on the fire scene, it's just dangerous work. So if I can avoid them having to do excessive amounts of time at work, I can help them live a happier, healthier lives. And we do see that sleep deprivation increases the behavioral health challenges, substance abuse, domestic issues in home. So we're just trying to balance that and really make it a level playing field, if we can get you to work when you're supposed to work and let you have off when you're supposed to be off, that would be the ideal situation.
Then even in the field, when you are working those long hours, sleep deprivation, that could lead to...
Accidents and injuries.
Accidents and injuries, absolutely, which we don't want to see that increase in the field.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for sharing that.
Hey, Barbara.
You may have answered this before, but how, what is the total cost of these 17 new employees?
They're 1.7 million for the 17.
1.7 million for the 17.
About $100,000 per firefighter.
Hush.
So I was going to try real hard to not speak, and I appreciate everybody that did, it was great, I appreciate it. I don't think anybody really thought I wasn't going to ask any questions, but I want to also say that I know that, well, I'm very proud to be the public safety guy here right now, and, but I'm also the city employee, I like to feel, I know we all care, but I do think 35 years gives me a little bit different perspective. And I have talked to all the public safety chiefs about their budget, and as others, but I've talked to them, so I feel like I do have a really good understanding, and the city manager and the budget director gave a very good present, you know, filled me in very well, so I appreciate that. Couple things, though, KP, I want you to just help me clarify, because as listening, I hear different things of what I think you meant, and with, and to the city manager as well, I kind of feel like I'm a bridge here with you two. A few years ago, the manager spoke to it, and this is why I feel like I can, is we were asked to support EMS to get more medics, so that the ambulances would get on scene faster, because our folks were sitting on scene, and some of them in the back, 20 minutes, 40 minutes, an hour, it was a long time. EMS is doing, is all they can do, but we agreed to do that, knowing that some, at some point, we were going to have to pay the piper for us to catch up, for the fire department, us to catch up. And that's where we are quickly approaching, so I wanted to state that, does that sound fair to both of you?
Yeah. And then, the other thing I would say, and it's certainly not trying to compare apples and oranges, because it's really not, but when we talk about the firefighter being more expensive, yes, they are, but remember, they're doing two distinct roles. I like to say when they go out the door and go to the right and they go to a fire, they're the only ones that can do that in the city, the only ones. If they go out the door and go to the left and go to an EMS call, there's only two departments that can do that, and we're as much the backbone of that as anybody else, so that's why the expense can be higher, so I just wanted to clarify that. Manager and I definitely disagree about this next part. Overtime, when you're the budget director, the manager, overtime is overtime is overtime. But for us, the difference is, is when you say mandatory, that means worth, you're going to work 08 to 20, you're not going home. Chris, 20 to 8 tonight, you're not going home. I don't care if you have childcare, I can't help it, that's what it is. So that's, that's the difference of what we're talking about mandatory. Michael might sign up every, every day to do 12 hours at a time, that's where we get 36 hours straight. We do 48 all the time, but 72 is getting ridiculous. There isn't sleeping at the stations anymore, those days are gone. Yeah, there's a couple, a couple out in the county, I'm sorry, a couple out in the county where they might, they might get a good night's sleep, but...
We love it.
Yes, ma'am. But there is a saying in the fire department, when a farmer calls you, something's going on, you know, we need to be there, so, or we're going down the causeway, so. So I think that's an important distinction between the overtimes, yes, they're, we're going to have it, PD, the chief's sitting over there, we're going to have it for the, any of the holidays and the festivals, we're all, we're not cheap when it comes to that, but there is a difference. Really, though, near and dear to my heart is when we start talking about the burnout, and it starts happening, it's not, as Ms. Wooton just said, it's not if there's going to be an injury, we do have injuries because of it, it does happen, it is for real, so that's where we've got to really pay attention here. And it is, I say, sir, it's imperative, and I ask you, from the bottom of my heart, to look at how to pay for it, whatever you think the myriad of that looks like, to help us increase the number this time, then I think we should do that. I think everything should be on the table, is all I'm asking, just bring it to us so we can make a decision. I've said many times so far, it's like making sausage, I didn't have an idea that, what that meant, but it definitely is, but I think we all ought to have a chance to weigh in on it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else?
You know, I think this is yet again another confrontation with reality about the complexity and the challenges we're going to have with this, you know, this budget. And, you know, but once again, we're going to, you know, I'm coming up to 20 years and the 20 budgets, and I think this is by far the toughest one I have encountered, you know, for a lot of reasons, you know, whether it be coming off COVID and, you know, with inflation and everything, and, you know, this is a tough one. And, you know, that maybe, I don't know, somewhere along the line of, you know, at least at this point, a compromise in the number to get the thing going in the right direction, and, you know, take this as a, you know, a long-term solution and work at it, you know, at a long, but, you know, I think it's, you know, I'm sensing, you know, that the members of this council, you know, feel we have to do something. And, but once again, it's, you know, as we go through these things, and we put everything into a context and everything, there are a lot of needs out there right now, but we also know that public safety is, you know, at the top of the order. And I thank you, Kenny, for all you and your...
Thank you, folks, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Hey, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Police Chief Nudiket will come and present about their proposed fiscal year '24, '25 budget.
Uh-oh. How to wing it?
50/50 here, which one's harder?
All right. Saved by the budget director, that's right. All right, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing Police Department to have some time today to talk about our budget with me, it's Deputy Chief Jeff Wilkerson, Deputy Chief Billy Zelms in the back, and where we are organizationally is we have 1,068 FTEs in the proposed budget, and that is not an increase, we did not come in front of this body asking for any additional personnel in this budget cycle. That is the breakdown of the budget, I think there are no surprises, you're all... Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing Police Department to have some time today to talk about our budget with me. It's Deputy Chief Jeff Wilkerson, Deputy Chief Billy Zelms in the back. And where we are organizationally is we have 1,068 FTEs in the proposed budget, and that is not an increase. We did not come in front of this body asking for any additional personnel in this budget cycle. That is the breakdown of the budget. I think there are no surprises. You're all aware that operations, just like fire, takes up the largest percentage. Where there is an increase in our budget is primarily with those absorbed IT and technology And I'd like to talk about some of our initiatives. So our new headquarters in First Precinct, we are fully in and operational, and I cannot thank everyone at this table enough, because it is truly a wonderful facility. To be able to have our headquarters staff, our detective bureau, our First Precinct, our property and evidence, our uniform and supply, and all those other entities, to have a 21st century working environment finally. I've heard nothing but praise for this new building, and I can't thank you enough. Major changes and initiatives with that building, everybody is in, and we are operational, which includes the Real-Time Crime Center, which we have talked about. I think this idea originated back in 2021, and it has finally come to fruition, that we now have real-time situational awareness. We have seven of our nine intelligence analysts hired. We are working six days a week, 16 hours a day, with the intent to expand that when we hired the last two civilian intelligence analysts. And what that does is provides us, provides our intelligence analysts a wide variety of all those different type of activities that really makes it safe for our community and it makes it safe for our officers. And I know I've talked about it, but I, I think I need to reiterate, you know, our FUSESS software, which was included in our budget, proposed budget, allows our analysts to monitor our body worn cameras. It allows them to, in real time, if necessary, monitor the mobile vehicle recorders in the cars. It tells us exactly where our officers are, allows us to monitor those 911 calls for service. A big one in today's age is social media monitoring. Instead of having sworn or civilian personnel monitoring all those social media sites to see what may be impacting the city of Virginia Beach that may cause us concern, we have software that will crawl social media now and bring it to our attention for follow-up. The license plate readers, and we've talked about that before, the stolen cars, the warrants on those, on the cars, the missing persons, which we seem to have quite a bit in, in Virginia Beach. And I think we do a very good job about locating those individuals and getting them back to their family members. The gunshot detection, we're gonna talk about our Genetek cameras, VDOT cameras, and Star Chase. And I don't know if I've talked about Star Chase with council, but it's something that we acquired last year. I think we all know that pursuits, they have some inherent liability. They can be dangerous for our community. They can be dangerous for our officers, and we really only want to be pursuing in a worst-case scenario. So for those crimes, and we get these questions from the community, because there are a lot of stolen cars, why don't you chase my stolen car? I need to get that back. Well, we don't want to put the community at risk. We don't want to endanger our officers. So what we purchased is a GPS technology that's currently outfitted on 10 vehicles out in the Third Precinct. And if we get behind a stolen car, we get behind a car that has warrants on it, and we think that they may flee from us, we can go ahead and deploy that GPS tracker onto that vehicle. We don't have to chase it, and then we can sit back and allow the Real-Time Crime Center to monitor the location of that car until it comes to rest. We establish a perimeter, and then we take them into custody on our terms, mitigating the risk to our officers in our community. And this is just an example of what we look at when we look at FUSESS, all the different cameras, the VDOT cameras, our cameras, our officers' locations, so that when our officers are responding to critical incidents, we can already have that situational awareness. And if we know that there's cameras in that location, we can pull up those cameras even prior to the officers arriving on scene and give them real-time situational awareness. And as part of that, we have launched keepvirginia beach safe.org. And what that does is it allows our community members, knowing that cameras are expensive, but they do solve crime. What this does is allow community members to register their cameras with the police department. It says 291, but actually, when I checked it this morning, it's close to 500, I do believe. And that are, those are citizens of our community that have told the police department where they have cameras. So if Councilmember Hutchinson, and I know the council member has a, you know, retail establishment, if you have cameras on there and you want the police to know where those cameras are, if we have a crime, instead of us knocking on doors and canvassing on foot the way we've done in years past, we can now go to our registry, find out that you have cameras listed, we had a crime in that vicinity, make a call and say, would you please, sir, look at your cameras and see if you captured that? And then the other piece is for those that wish to do so, for a subscription fee through FUSESS, they can purchase a subscription that will allow their cameras to feed back into our Real-Time Crime Center that would allow the police, under legitimate law enforcement circumstances, to actually pull up their cameras and look at it real time for need be if we have a crime condition. So I think this is very beneficial, because cameras are expensive. It's not a budget request that we have made, but it allows us to exponentially expand our camera network. One of the other pieces that I wanted to touch about, it's a priority for the police department, fire department, all of our public safety departments, of course, is, is employee wellness. And just really wanted to talk about Dr. To Be Jessica Huffman. She has a lot of impressive credentials, but we were able to hire her last year, and she will defend, I'm sure successfully, her thesis on April the 8th, and will be a PhD. And I think it gives us great pleasure for us to be able to say that we are going to have a PhD on staff of the police department to help with counseling, help with accumulative trauma, help with the PTSD that is occurring. It is not something that public safety and especially law enforcement has embraced. There has always been a stigma about what that looks like. But I think hiring Ms. Huffman, Dr. Huffman, has been a incremental step for this police department, especially when you look at her dissertation, and I'm not gonna try to read it all, but, but when we're talking about the collaboration between CIT officers and mental health professionals, and I know that is a topic of interest for all of us as we respond out and deal with these critical cases in our community. So she has been a blessing to this department to really help us with the critical incident debriefs and all that trauma. You know, what we are seeing across the country, officer suicides are an increase, and we are not immune from that. We, we had one of our own take their lives back in 2021. And we want to make sure there's everything that we can do under our power that that never happens again. And staffing. Our request of council is to keep us at our current authorized strength. We currently have approximately 55 sworn vacancies, and those are primarily due to retirements. I know I've been in front of the body, and at one point, I think prior to the step plan and a number of initiatives that you so graciously provided, we were close to 100 vacancies. And we had gotten down to about 40, but unfortunately, we had just hit a retirement, a wave of retirements. It's that retirement cycle, and that's what we're going through right now. Folks are just, they're not leaving us. But I want to caution that even though we are doing better as a city and an organization and a community, that is still not true for a lot of our police departments. I saw some data for San Francisco the other day, and they are a larger department. I think they're supposed to be 2,500 sworn, and they're down to about 1,900. So almost 600 vacancies. And we're talking about 55, with a recruit class scheduled for the end of June, as well as Deputy Chief Zelms does a great job being aggressive with our recruiting of lateral officers. So our ask would be to keep us at our authorized complement of 1068, and allow us to continue to have those new recruit classes and provide this community and this council with the level of professional policing that you all expect and deserve. Questions?
Any questions? Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. There's more, but what is the question, comment? Can you, for the, for the, I guess, the public, because there is a, I guess, a delicate balance between privacy and then security, and I know with a lot of the cameras, we've seen it across.
Yes, sir.
Cities. And I know last year, I think last summer, not a knock on Patrick, but I'm 6'5", I think he was spying on me at the oceanfront. Cameras, I was trying to sneak into a festival. But can you, for the public, just give us an understanding of, you know, the city genetic, genetic?
Genetech, sir.
Genetech versus the VDOT, and, you know, is that being recorded? Do you have the privacy when we're out on the boardwalk with our family? Help us understand.
Yes, sir. The VDOT cameras are state-run cameras on our expressways, which we do have access to. The Genetech is a citywide camera system with a lot of those cameras in our resort area, in our boardwalk, at town, at town center. What I would offer is everywhere we go, we're being recorded, and those cameras are no different. But for us to access them and use that data, we have to have a legitimate law enforcement purpose, and we do have a very robust auditing trail that we can look at what that looks like and see if we have people accessing the system that do not have a legitimate business need, and then take the appropriate action. So we're very cognizant of those, those concerns, those civil liberty concerns about the use of that, and we do balance that as well as we can.
And after that, Councilmember Taylor, if for any reason these were subject to FOIA, the police department in collaboration with the attorney's office has to go through a very robust process of blocking out information that may be of private nature regarding individuals in the public.
Thank you.
Hey, Michael. Speaking of cameras, I guess I have a question about the schools enforcement, school zone traffic enforcement using cameras. Where are, where, where is Virginia Beach?
So we sent a report to council a couple of months ago, and basically where we are is that the, the stoplight camera contrast is expiring, and we're putting out a RFP process and bringing that scope into that package to get a sense of what that would look like, and then we'll bring that back to council before we act on it. I think we probably need to bring that, I think we have to make a decision on that, chief.
Yes, sir.
By January or something like that, the next year?
I believe that's correct, sir.
Yeah, so probably like in the fall time, we'll bring that to council, you know, with some guidance as it relates to, do we want to go into school enforcement, school zone enforcement, and which locations, in addition to the regular stoplight cameras?
And we'll have a chance to talk about that in some greater detail, much greater detail when it comes, but from what I understand, I think everyone is against speeding in a school zone, I'm sure. From what I understand, that, that program helps to sort of redirect very valuable police resources into other very needed areas in crime prevention and deterrence and investigation, and generates revenue, and reduces speeding in school zones, correct?
Councilmember, I believe that would be correct on all three. What it would allow us to do is our motorcycle unit predominantly is deployed to those school zones during the day to address those community concerns. So theoretically, if we had speed enforcement cameras there, that would free up our motorcycle officers for other parts and activities throughout the city.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have a chance to talk about all that later, but I'm just curious in how, how that might impact the budget as well.
Any one else?
Mayor, thank you.
Hello, thank you, chief. And it takes a lot of effort by a lot of people to make us the safest city that we are, and I thank everybody, okay?
Thank you all.
Okay. How about, we're gonna have finance now, then maybe after that, we'll have, take a short break before we get to the CIP stuff.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think that's cute for the finance director, Letitia Shelton, it'd be quick and brief as possible.
We can take a short break now and come back. Hey, I'm gonna make this show sweet. All right. Oh. Okay. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, City Council members. I am Letitia Shelton, the Finance Director. Before I get started, I wanted to introduce my senior team, Andrew Oliver, Deputy Director, Wendy Hugh, Deputy Director, Leah Hunger is our Risk Management Administrator. Most of you know her. And then, of course, Laverre Tolentino, which is our purchasing agent. I often get the question, what is Finance Department role versus budget? So I just want to touch on that briefly. My brother over there. Budgeting is involved with planning and controlling the allocations of the city funds, whereas finance is a more historical, record-keeping process, classifying and analyzing the financial transactions for the city to ensure that we have actual financial information. The Finance Department, better quit. The Finance Department consists of 66 employees. It says the number of division is six. I actually have eight. We have administration, we have the accounting section, we have payables, we have payroll, we have purchasing, and we have the, our Financial Systems Services Group, as well as SWAM. And then my eighth division is my Risk Management. Our proposed budget for FY '25 is 28.8 million, of which 7.6 million is the General Fund side, which is the seven divisions that I mentioned earlier. As, as with most of the General Fund departments, our biggest budget is salaries. Risk Management is 21 million. Then we're gonna have a slide here showing you the breakdown of each of my divisions and the total staffing for each. Okay. Major changes and initiatives. We're collaborating with the Human Services, I'm sorry, Human Resources and IT on the new human resource and payroll system. We're implementing new measures to enhance efficiency and streamline our operations. We're keeping current on new legislations and regulations, tax laws, new accounting and audit standards, standards, grants, compliances, oversight, which, talk about new regulations. Meeting the city's risk management needs, we've just implemented a new risk management system called Clear Risk, and that's gonna help us better identify, hold on, let me get to my page. That's gonna improve the efficiency and eliminate any redundancy that we were getting with the old system. Talent, attri, attractions and retention, just like everybody else with the great resignation. We're losing folks. They come to the city, we train them up, and next thing we know, we lose them, basically because, as you've, you've been talking about earlier, the salaries are a big issue with us. And so if we could, if my one ask is that we could get a new salary study done so that we could be in competition with the earlier localities and private companies. And as you know, part of my department deals with the bond structure. Last week, we had Davenport presenting to you that we're about to go out and issue new bonds, general obligation bonds in an amount of 276 million, public facility revenue bonds in an amount of 166 million, and that's forthcoming. So that's basically all I have.
Okay, Chris, and then more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. James. On the department operating budget, and it seems like it's pretty consistent with the admin, and maybe it's inflation, but I see 105% increase, which is roughly 318,000 per employee. Can you just help us understand? see 105% increase, which is roughly $318,000 per employee. Can you just help us understand what some of those costs are? Is, are those raises? Is that equipment, technology?
So the biggest part of our budget, we had almost a million dollar increase due to the VB time and telestaffing systems that are in place for payroll, time and attendance.
That's what that?
That's what that is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, anybody else worth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Presentation, just a quick question because the number jumped out to me for Risk Management, 21 million. I mean, that's an important department in the area with 21 million. What would, from the six or seven employees?
Leah, could you come up?
It's okay. Thank you.
Oh, we got the microphone.
That's why I brought Risk in here so she could answer that risky question.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you. So my name is Leah Hunger. If you look at the slide that Letitia prepared, which is slide number four, I believe. The majority of the spend for worker, for our risk budget is our workers' compensation program. We are self-insured for workers' compensation. So you'll notice that's the majority of the fund there. It's 11 million proposed for this year.
Okay, Josh.
Leah, just wait right there for a second. So I just, mine's a, mine's to say, hey, thank you. I know y'all have a lot of, I don't want to say thankless, but you have, you're behind the scenes working very hard. And right before I left, we know, we started working on the cancer screening in the Grail, and we put it through, and we did, we did catch somebody that, that had some cancer. You met him the other day, Vice Mayor. So I can't say enough about how much I know that you and everybody and the Budget Director, I mean, we made money happen. It was a lot. Everybody was involved. But we are in a dangerous profession when you talk about police and fire. And so I think it has to, sometimes you do have to look above and beyond. And I really appreciate you stepping forward at the time. It was no small ask of the amount of money and everything that we were doing. I know in a, in a bean counter way, in the end, we can say that if we're trying to save money, if we catch something sooner than later, it does end up actually saving the city money. But in this instance, it's what we're talking about, where we're really trying to care about the employees. And I think that's first and foremost. And it was very evident you did it. And for you supporting us, I really appreciate it. And obviously, the Budget Director and everybody else that was involved, I don't want to leave anybody out. The city manager was heavily involved. It was a big lift, and I appreciate it for everybody for doing that for, for all of us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Amelia.
Just wanted to ask, looking at SWAM, where you did put SWAM's office, where there is a change, was there a need for any more employees? Yes, no?
Laverre.
I know it's growing, and these four have really been doing a great job.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of City Council. The SWAM office continues to perform and, and do all the things suggested and recommended by the 2018 disparity study. We're embarking on another study coming up real soon. And so I don't know what's going to become of that study. But if there is a need for additional staff, I believe that study will provide that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, anyone else? Hey, thank you. And, you know, it's obviously, it, it takes a lot of different type of departments and actions to run a big city of our magnitude. And thank you so much for what you do. Thank you. At this point, folks, why don't we go ahead and, we've been in the chairs for well over three hours. Why don't we take just a 10-minute break?
Thank you, Mr. Duhany, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Dan Adams with Public Works Coastal Engineering, pleased to present the FY 25 through 30 Coastal Improvement Program. Quick look at the big picture, the coastal section, it is the smallest CIP section in the city, but we feel like we get a little big bang for our tax dollar, we accomplish quite a bit. We address the critical need of shore protection and safe navigation. The vast majority of the program funding is for shore protection and beach replenishment. Navigation dredging comprises about 29% of the CIP budget, and the neighborhood dredging program comes in at 4%. So a quick look at the beach replenishment and beach access program summary. These projects provide level funding of the city cost share to support the federal shore protection projects for the Resort Beach and Sandbridge Beach, along with the Sandbridge Access Improvement Program. The Sandbridge projects are funded through SSD revenues, and there's no above target funding requested for this program. Next, we're going to, as the summary slide for the navigation dredging program, this provides level funding to support the city cost share for the federal navigation projects at Lynn Haven and Rudy Inlets, and it supports funding for the city's main channel dredging program and projects. Also provides funding for replacement of the new Rudy Inlet dredge that should be coming online in early 2025, along with some major dredge operations facility upgrades and modifications, and there are no above target requests with this program. Moving along to our neighborhood navigation dredging program, we now have adopted eight neighborhood projects. We've completed the first cycle dredging for five of those. We are currently dredging the long awaited Gills and Hurst Cove projects, and we will soon be dredging for the second cycle in the Harbor Point and Shadow Lawn Neighborhoods. That contract is actually underway and executed, they're starting with dredging of the main inner harbor channel in Rudy Inlet. Later this year, we anticipate going out to bid for the second cycle of Old donation and Babel Creek Neighborhood dredging. This year's budget does include rate analysis after we completed Shilling Point and Gills Cove dredging. They then included a rate adjustment, and that's part of the operating budget and ordinances. We have two projects to highlight with some programmatic funding changes. The first one is our Bay Beaches Restoration CIP. This CIP provided funding for design and permitting for Ocean Park and Cape Henry Beaches and the first renourishment of Ocean Park Beach in July 2022, which is pictured there, very successful project. We conducted a partial beach restoration late last year from our emergency sand stockpile at the boot ramp Lynn Haven Dredge Material Management Area, and there will be a federal dredging contract that bids actually open later this week, I think Thursday, for the dredging of Lynn Haven Inlet, and that sand is going to go on to Cape Henry Beach. So with that, the additional funding shown here will provide for the second restoration of Cape Henry Beach in FY 2930. And the second project with funding changes is Croatan Beach. This continues the funding levels that were programmed at FY 28 levels for fiscal years 29 and 30. This, there's a major renourishment planned in conjunction with Resort Beach Nourishment Project. That contract has been delayed, we thought, this is part of the harbor deepening project and collaboration between the Army Corps of Engineers Port of Virginia and Virginia Beach. We had thought they were going to encounter the beach quality sand earlier in the dredging project. Turns out it's going to be at the tail end, so now the project is moved into early 2025. So the funding levels for 29 and 30 will provide funding for the next major renourishment of Croatan Beach when needed. We have one new coastal project to mention, it's really not a new project, we're just phasing out the old CIP 130 that was created in FY 12 and 13, and that funded the first restoration of Chesapeake Beach and the planned nourishment that is under contract and scheduled to start after July 4th of this year. That will be our first renourishment of, to that restored beach. This funding program in FY 28 and 29 would manage a future nourishment. That's now planned on a four to five year nourishment cycle. So this simply just closes out the old CIP and would create, closes the books and creates a new project. A couple of projects that have been requested but not funded in the budget, they would require additional funding to move forward. First is the Croatan and Bay Beach ADA Access Improvement. What this project would do would design two new beach access structures at, or six total, two at Croatan Beach, two at Chesapeake Beach, and two at Cape Henry Beach. If this was approved, we would embark on a public input campaign to identify those locations that are most desirable to locate these accesses and would move out with that project. Right now, we have one ADA access facility located just west of the Lesnar Bridge at the Lynn Haven Boot Ramp and Beach Facility, and we have two on the west side, one that's been in place for quite a while at Sandalwood, and a recently relocated access point near Starfish that was done with the new development there, and that should be opening very soon. Second request for above target funding is a CIP to address maintenance of the dredge and support equipment for the Rudy Inlet dredge. This project would provide, it's a level funding strategy for semi-annual maintenance. This would not be weekly, monthly, or even necessarily annual maintenance, but things that need to happen every few years. It would replace big ticket equipment when needed. The dredge staff, the city garage staff, they do an excellent job of extending and maintaining dredge assets to achieve maximum service life. However, replacement needs can be hard to predict, and if a major piece of equipment goes down suddenly, it needs to be replaced. Right now, that's funded out of the operating budget, it can create spikes in the budget, and it's just more efficient to manage if we had a level funding strategy. The routine maintenance would continue to be funded through the operating budget. And what we have going on now and coming soon, we're very busy in the coastal section underway. We have active dredging in the eastern branch of the Lynn Haven River. We combine that contract with the Gills Cove and Hurst Cove, Hurst Cove navigation projects, so we're doing a three in one there. Currently underway also is the Rudy Inlet inter-channel dredging, that's a three in one contract, it'll also dredge Shadow Lawn and Harbor Point. We combine these contracts together to achieve better bid prices and economy of scale, and it's worked well for us. Coming soon, I mentioned earlier, the Lynn Haven Inlet Federal Channel Dredging System. That would be a contract administered by the Army Corps that will place sand on Cape Henry Beach, and we have a city contract that has been issued for Chesapeake Beach renourishment, and that'll start just after July 4th. We also have upcoming in early 25, the Resort Beach Croatan Renourishment, and 25 dredging of the western branch of the Lynn Haven River and the Old donation Babel Creek Neighborhoods. Major challenge in the coastal section, well, funding for shore protection is vital to maintaining and sustaining resilient beaches. We've been very successful in reducing storm damages in Virginia Beach through shore protection and sand placement on our beaches. We value our partnerships with the Army Corps of Engineers, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, which is the federal agency that we lease our sand resources from for the Sandbridge Project. They're now doing a lot of work along the east coast to identify future sand sources. There is sand out there, but it's going to be, we're going to have to go farther out and deeper to obtain that in the future. Near term, we're okay, we've identified sand sources for our program in the near term. This is a, we're talking 30, 50 years out, we're going to, it's not too soon to start looking, but there's a lot of efforts underway that the city had supported, and we were glad to see BoM get that funding to do that work. And we're also, there's also some work going on on the state level and regionally to identify other nearshore sand sources. So with that, be happy to take any questions or comments.
Rosemary, then Barbara.
Thank you, Dan. The Resort Croatan Beach, we're having a groundbreaking in May with the Army Corps with that project. Are they going to do the Resort first and then Croatan, is that how that's going to work?
They are going to do, yes, the Resort first and then Croatan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the beaches and waterways reconvened after all these years for the first time yesterday, and we had good attendance and I think a good meeting, and just want to thank Dan for leading the charge. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the first issue they're going to look at is the encroachment issue that's been brought up by members of this council, and Croatan also wanted to have their beach looked at. Do we, we need to take action on that?
We did an in-depth study with a steering committee from the Croatan neighborhood several years ago, and actually, we're implementing those recommendations. So I believe with the funding that's been appropriated and the project that's planned, we're going to place 130,000 cubic yards of sand on Croatan Beach, and that's by far the largest amount we've placed at any one event, so it's going to make a huge impact. But if there is a need to further dive into that, we'd be happy to, but we'll have to talk more about what the exact concern and ask is at this point from the neighborhood.
The reason we brought all this up again, why I brought it up was because there were residents who were really in, they didn't like what y'all had to say, they had different thoughts, and they wanted beaches and waterways to be reformed to look at it from a
They did.
I guess more neutral.
I think since then, the sand from the harbor deepening project had been identified. I think at that time, we were not, we were uncertain where we were going to get that volume of sand economically. So it may be less of a concern now.
Hopefully.
But we will reach out, we'll all reach out to our contacts in Croatan again and have a conversation with them.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you doing everything yesterday.
Thank you.
Hey, Barbara and Chris, and then Josh.
When will the next Sandbridge project be done, do you have an idea yet?
Yeah, our latest discussions with the Army Corps is 2026.
It would be doing, every, it'd be four years?
It's about a five-year cycle now.
I thought going in that it was going to be three years, but it's stretching to five.
Actually, the Resort Beach and Sandbridge, and many beach nourishment projects on the east coast, they are on a, planned on a three-year cycle initially. We've been able to place the same annual volume of sand on the beach, but on a longer cycle, so it's more economical, fewer disruptions of the beach, so it's really been a plus, not a negative. So, but we're getting the same volume of sand over time, whether we do it every three years, every five years. So we just do larger projects farther apart.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris and Josh.
Hello, good afternoon. Could you go to slide 12, please? My slide 12, it's the Croatan Bay Beaches ADA. Is that, I know it says, "In response to citizen requests for public beach access improvements along Croatan and the city's bayfront beaches," which I would assume include districts nine and eight, but it says just council district five, is that accurate?
That may not be accurate.
Yeah, I think, I saw that too, Councilmember Taylor, I think that's an error, I think it should be five, eight, and nine.
I received a message from Mr. Tosh Cahoon, who's a resident of District Eight. Said, "Anything on the beach ramps," which we're kind of talking about, ADA access for Cape Story, we are still the only neighborhood without them. Is that included in this discussion? That Cape Story, I know it says bayfront beaches, which is kind of broad, and then Cape Henry Beaches, which some people refer to Cape Henry as Cape Story, so I'm just trying to.
Cape Story, the Sandalwood Beach Access serves the Cape Story neighborhood. It's located just east of the Resort and Conference Center.
And that, because the community's saying they don't have the ADA accessible ramps, are you, is included?
There is one there now. This would provide two, somewhere along Chesapeake and Cape Henry Beaches, so one additional access east and west of, I'm sorry, two each, east and west of the Lesnar, and locations to be determined. So like I said, we'd have a public input process and get some feedback from the communities where they would like them, which ones make the most sense.
Just to clarify, so this is requested but not funded, so this is not in the budget. He was just showing you the items that were requested but weren't able to be funded.
Which was my next point, we would, we always talk about disparity, equitable access, and I was attending a RAC Subcommittee meeting with Councilman Remick last year, where we actually acknowledged and honored the gentleman that brought forth handicap accessibility to the oceanfront, to the beaches. So I just can't imagine how this is pushed to FY 26, so we're going to go two or three more summers with those individuals that can't access our beach, even though many don't consider Shore Drive the resort, but it is a major gateway with a major hotel there. And so I would hope that, maybe Mr. Manager, your recommendations, we got a lot of recommendations in there. How do we get to find in $2.3 million, because we're finding a lot of other money, and this is affecting really a lot of people's livelihood for them to, or the beaches that they support with their taxpayer dollars.
So Councilmember Taylor, just to clarify, this is requested but not funded, so it won't even come officially in 26. There is no money programmed in the budget right now for it, so like this would be council asking to create this and providing the funding for this.
Thank you, sir.
Until then, we, I'm sorry.
No, please.
Until then, we've done some renourishment, and that has created more level sandy paths to the beach, and we also are, we have the ability to, with the operating beach operations, to maybe deploy some rollout mats. And so with time to time, we get requests for that, so that's something we could consider, short of structural improvements.
Okay, Josh, and then Michael.
Mr. Adams, I just want to say thank you for your continued efforts, at least over the one year, three months, and two days I've been in office to engage with the bayfront communities, you know, about beach renourishments and, you know, all things related to what you do, and you and Jim White, I believe, correct, responding, very responsive to emails and questions about timing of replenishments and what have you. So I just, I just wanted to say thank you, and I also want to acknowledge so about $2 million worth of savings that you all realized recently with the Chesapeake Beach renourishment and the strategy you employed in terms of the bidding process and the extended bidding period. I believe the original estimate was, estimate was somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.8 million, and then then it came in at about 1.8, so, and I just want to commend you for those efforts for saving taxpayers $2 million, and also still finding a way to place 150,000 cubic feet of sand on our beaches, so, so good work.
Thank you.
I just want to speak on the accessibility as well, because from my point of view, we have more work to do in order to make the beaches in Virginia Beach more accessible to the people who own them, and that's the citizens of Virginia Beach from every part of Virginia Beach. And I do think we have some other ways we can do that, which I'll save for a different time. But in this case, I do think that ADA accessibility is important, and I think it's something that we need to look at, because ultimately, you know, these precious resources are, that's defining for our city are the property of the entire public, and they should be accessible and to everyone, including with access to parking, but that's another conversation. But as accessible as possible, and I don't know the answer, I mean, so I'm not sure if this already exists, I'm sure that it does, but there are ADA accessible beaches throughout the city, and I wonder if there's a place where all that's listed that people can easily find it and then direct themselves to those parts of, to those particular beaches, if that's something they need. I'm sure it must exist somewhere, but maybe it needs to be kind of highlighted or, or just made, you know, prioritize a little bit more on the city's website or in possibly even social media posts. These are your ADA accessible beach access points. And then I also just want to share that there is at least one new ADA accessible beach access coming, in District Eight no less, with the renovation of Westminster Canterbury, and that's coming at no cost to the city. I think a savings of about $1 million, just shy of $1 million. So there is at least one new beach access coming on the Bay Area that is ADA accessible, and I think that's coming very soon.
Anyone else at this point? Tell you what, it's an awesome responsibility we have, but you're doing a great job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, David Yarman with the Public Works Department is going to give the roadways CIP for council's conversation and discussion.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Duhany. Appreciate the opportunity to come and present FY 25 through 30 roadway CIP to you today. We'll start off with just a general funding overview for the local funds. You'll note we have about five categories, we try to break everything down into the more manageable sections here. Our largest section there is the congestion relief and capacity improvements, which makes up about 54% of our local funding. That dollar value is about $118, $119 million. The remaining, the projects are spread amongst the other remaining sections with safety improvements, special projects, maintenance, bridge projects as well. Our total city funding in years one through six is $218.8 million, and that encompasses about 63 projects and programs together. So we take that money and we add it to our other funding sources that come from state and federal grant funding. You'll note here that our city funding represents about 60, a little less than 60% of our overall funding, and our state and federal resources, about 41% in the CIP cycle. That total dollar value that comes in from state and federal funding is $155 million. So we add all that together, our total funding for years one through six is $373.8 million, and our total roadway program cost, if we had all the money in the world, is $1.8 billion, which is a rather large number. So I'm going to go through the next couple of slides here, we've got a lot of projects in here, and obviously, I'm not going to go through all of these. But what I want to do is just kind of highlight the fact that we have a lot of projects that have state and federal funding. As I'm scrolling through here, you can see the asterisks on these, they have some form of state or combination of state and federal. So as we go through these projects, almost three quarters of our projects have some component in there of state and federal money on that. So you can see through this list, again, these are roadway projects with no changes, so just to give you an idea of what that looks like. The next slide is kind of a continuation, this is, these are our roadway programs with no change. So these programs are throughout the city. You'll note, for example, the bus stop shelters, bus shelters, that's item number one. Our operations folks have some larger programs down there, number four with the major bridge rehabilitation, and number seven with street reconstruction engineering, we use the TSI program quite a bit as well. That's where our matching grant comes from, federal projects and smaller projects as well. So about 31% of these programs have state and federal funding tied to them as well. So it's a big deal with the programs, and obviously, as time goes by, what we can do with these programs becomes a little bit less due to inflation and cost increases. So that's another factor that we have to keep in mind, too. We're, we're doing, trying to do the same thing, but really not able to accomplish as much with the current funding levels. So we're talking about a roadway project with modifications, we have six projects this CIP cycle we want to bring forward and just kind of highlight for you. The first one is Cleveland Street Phase Four. This is a three-lane divided roadway from which, or free lane, three-lane divided roadway from Witch Duck Road to Independence. It's a smart scale project, which means it's federal funding. Originally, we had a four-lane section that was reduced to a three-lane. We believe the, the traffic counts allowed us to do that, we also were trying to find a way to minimize some of the property impacts. We thought that would be a positive thing as we went through the NEPA process. As it turned out, the NEPA was elevated from categorical exclusion to an environmental assessment, which is a higher level of document, requires more time, more effort, and so that's where we are right now. So this project's been delayed a little bit because of these NEPA impacts, so we're working through that right now. Once we get a better idea of the schedule, we'll be able to kind of program that more appropriately, but this is what we know right now. The total project cost there is $44.4 million. Next slide has actually two projects on there, this is Elbow Road Phase Two B and Two C. This has, it's the four-lane segment here from Salem Road to Indian River Road, and it also would include two lanes west of Indian River Road heading to the Chesapeake city line to tie in with their project. This project includes a new four-lane bridge that would take care of a lot of the shoulder and the curve improvements in there. And again, this project's going to have eight-foot sidewalks on both sides and four-foot on-road bike lanes. It is federally funded, so sound walls will be included in the residential sections. And as you recall, we had a bid opening in the fall, we had one bidder and came in at $97 million, which was about $43 million over our engineer's estimate, which was a real eye-opener. And so the comments we heard then was, wait, bid it again, it'll be a better time for us. So we wait, open bids in February, and we had two bidders this time, so twice as many bidders, but the bids still came in at $84 million. So we've, we've kind of analyzed that and talked to the contractor and tried to, you know, do as much as we can to kind of whittle this down, but this is, this is kind of where we are. We're concerned about bid fatigue if we take this out again, that we may get no bidders at that point. So what we've proposed to kind of address this is moving money from Indian River Phase Seven A, $13.5 million to cover the deficit, and we have time on Indian River Seven A to backfill that in future CIP cycles. That, that money has not been shown in here because that is on your agenda as item number eight today for consideration. So obviously, you haven't taken action on it, so we didn't include it in here. So that's the, the plan there. And that project cost, as of what we had before, that was 85.1 million with the 13 and a half. That's going to put it around a $98 million project, both, again, two projects in one. So the next slide has, again, two projects kind of being managed together, is Indian River Road Phase Seven A and Seven B. Again, this is a four-lane section from Lynn Haven Parkway down to Elbow Road, about 2.1 miles. This also includes on-road bike lanes, multi-use pass, and LED streetlights. Utility relocations are going to remain overhead. This project also is federally funded with smart scale, and it does include sound walls as well. We're about 90% complete with design, we have extensive property acquisition. I think there's over 130 parcels on this project that have some form of acquisition. that have some form of acquisition. So we're going to be in that phase for a little bit. And our construction start right now is projected for spring of '27. That could change depending on how a property acquisition goes. So we'll know more as we get into it. And that total project cost right now is $99.4 million. The last project on our changes list here is Nemo Parkway Phase 7B. This is a two-lane undivided roadway from Albuquerque Drive, tying into the Nemo Phase, Sandbridge Road, Nemo Parkway Phase 7A project that's under construction. It's about a mile and a half. Again, this would include on-road bike lanes as well as a shared use path and a new bridge spanning Asheville Creek. We've completed the preliminary engineering report, and we've had two public meetings on this. Out of the last public meeting, there were discussions with FHWA, VDOT, and the Corps of Engineers. And in an effort to have risk mitigation on this for future potential lawsuits, the decision was made that this should really be elevated to an EIS. We, we don't necessarily feel in our heart that it's an EIS. But again, in the climate that we're in right now and the kind of environment, the decision was made, if we can avoid the risk now, we put the time in now, hopefully we won't have a delay on the backend with lawsuits or challenges to the project. So the total cost right now on that is about $58.9 million. All right, next slide, we've got two projects we're looking to introduce into the CIP this year, two new roadway projects. Dive into those. The first one is North Great Neck Road Bridge Rehabilitation. This is just a, a good rehab of the bridge there, the bridge decks, replacement of the joints, repairs to the deck and overlay, and painting of the substructure, including the beams, diaphragms, and cross frames. So this is just a, a good project. Our Public Works operations staff will manage that. Keeps the bridge in a fair condition rating, which is, is at least where we want to stay, and extends the service life of both bridges by 20 years. So pretty good bang for the buck to get another 20 years out of life for those bridges. So they're, they're definitely important bridges. Next project, we've got, whoops, let me back up. I failed to say that was $11.4 million for that work there. The next project is the Pacific Avenue Turn Lanes. You saw this project a couple of weeks ago, and I think Katie Shannon did the smart scale presentation. Again, turn lanes at 17th and 22nd Street along Pacific Avenue, eastbound and westbound at 17th, and westbound left turn lane at 22nd Street. The big picture with this project is there's never be, going to be a good time to do it. It's always going to be impactful. It probably should have been done a couple of decades ago. And here we are today saying we need to do Pacific Avenue Turn Lane. So if anyone's driven that, you know, it's, it's a congestion issue. As soon as someone puts on their left blinker, everyone wants to get in the right turn lane, and it can create safety problems with the weaving movements out there as well. One good development on this, too, we've got a penciled-in mark for $3 million from the Carbon Reduction Program. That's another federally funded program. And the TPO is expected to vote on that in May. So that would be a good start on this project, is $3 million to get us going. That would be provided through that program. So and finally, the last chart we've got is just roadway projects with a bounce to complete. And this is really just an informational thing, but it also is a, a visual thing to realize that this list is growing. And so even though we, we have to push some projects to the right for other schedule delays, the list just continues to grow. And at some point, we have federal and state obligations that we're going to have to meet in here, we're going to have to address. So there will be schedule impacts that will again push it next year. But these are getting closer in the windshield, and we're going to have to start addressing these in the not-too-distant future. So let's see, whoops, let me go back. Roadway accomplishments. We don't have as pretty pictures as the coastal section does, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna work with what we have here. We got some, this is just a, a small sampling of what we have underway in the, the program. Just a couple of sidewalk projects, Euclid Road Sidewalk Phase Two, that's about 70% complete. On the right-hand side of the slide is Providence Road Sidewalk. That was a real good connection up there along Providence Road between the neighborhoods. In the middle is Virginia, First Colony, Virginia Beach Boulevard, the intersection improvements. It's about 35% complete now. Still a lot of work at night, but you're starting to see more work during the day as they open up areas outside of traffic. And then finally, Sandbridge Road, Nemo Parkway Phase 7A. We're about 60% complete on that and staying well ahead of schedule, hoping to keep it that way. That's been a shining example of a project that is moving along very well. And then finally, just to highlight some of our challenges, I know everyone has those, just to highlight a few of ours. We continue to have struggle with the market conditions and the cost increases. I mean, I think that's across the board. But in the construction industry, we're really feeling the heat on that in this area due to a lot of the regional projects. HR BT being delayed doesn't help. Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel, the Hampton Roads Express Lanes, there's just a lot of regional projects, even some mega projects that are going on and just consuming a lot of bandwidth. And it's reflected in our bid prices and the number of bidders that we're getting on projects. We're seeing some pricing has plateaued a little bit. We're still seeing some increases, though, overall, about a half a percent per month. So that gives you an idea about 6% per year roughly for inflation. Programatically, it's becoming very difficult to balance the roadway CIP. We've, we've done a lot of things. Contingency does a lot of things on projects, but we're kind of out of that period. We, we did all that the last couple of years. Over the last, this CIP cycle and the last one, we've got over $290 million worth of cost increases. So you can't, you can't absorb that. So either we're, we're canceling projects, we're pushing projects, or we're adding more money. We've got to find a way to, to make that work, even with our state and federal commitments. Another item we've got is tree mitigation. I know that was something that council had kind of advocated for here recently. And while we understand the benefits of that, it's a real cost programmatically. I don't know if council's seen what those impacts look like on the roadway program. Everything we do is linear, so it's big numbers, a lot of acreage. So for us, it's a pretty good, big impact. And I just put a number there for you, just for three projects, we're already up to $1.1 million. So we don't have that money. We're trying to pay for concrete and asphalt and rebar. So we're going to have to come back next CIP cycle and, and ask for money just to fund that in addition to other increases that we're talking about. So I just want to make, make council aware of kind of the, the downstream impacts of those policy decisions that are made. The last, or second-to-last bullet, we're dealing with VDOT performance metrics, which is how we're being graded on performance on projects. And so that does impact how we are able to secure or not secure grant funding in the future. So it's a, it's a graded performance. It's almost like we have another boss in VDOT that we have to answer to. So, but we, we do that a lot. That's, that's how we operate with them. So we're trying to deal with that and, and manage that as well. And then finally, the last bullet, I just wanted to highlight, we've talked about creating, we're not doing it this CIP cycle proposing, but we want to plant the seed. We've talked about creating a neighborhood sidewalk program. One of the struggles we have is that we have a TSI program. Sidewalk projects are expensive these days. If you want to do a thousand-foot sidewalk in a neighborhood, that's about $2 million. That's not appropriate to put in the TSI program. So we'd like to at least propose a program. Maybe we could put a half a million dollars a year, and every third or fourth year, we could build a sidewalk in a neighborhood. As we said before, the sidewalks in the neighborhood don't score as well in the grant funding because they don't provide connectivity to other neighborhoods. It's just internal. And at least on the state and federal grants, we just don't do as well with that. So we want to see if we can find a way. People have called and said, what do I do about getting my sidewalk funded? And you feel a little helpless because we just, we feel like we don't have as much to offer. If we took $2 million out of TSI, it would, it would gut the program. It would take three quarters of the funding for one year. We just, we can't afford to do that right now. So we're just planting the seed, and maybe next year we can water it. Maybe it'll sprout some, some roots and take off there. So.
All right.
All right.
Any questions at all? Amelia, okay, Hutch, Jen, and Barbara?
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I have a question on page four.
Okay.
Just to tell me a little bit more, I've had citizens call and concern about that Independence Boulevard, Edwin Drive.
Okay.
Even though you have with no change, it's not coming up to what, 25, 26?
Yes, ma'am.
On 26? Can you, you know, elaborate a little bit more about that? Because I've had several calls.
Yes, that's the, that's the project where we're doing the, the median U-turns on Independence Boulevard at Edwin. And we show that project is upcoming, meaning that there's funding that's been appropriated for that for smart scale. It just, we just haven't received it yet. I think that's '27 is when that will start, it's '26 or '27. So it's coming. But the idea there is that we improve the efficiency by moving some of those turning movements away from the intersection, kind of like we did at Indian River Kempstil. And although it's a little different, it just allows the intersection to operate more efficiently and a little more safely. And that allows the corridor, the overall corridor to operate more efficiently.
Yeah, because their concern was they do not like that Kempstil intersection. People get all mixed up all the time.
Sure.
Really mean.
Sure.
And going into that neighborhood as well, there's a car wash all near that area.
Yes, ma'am.
How badly is it going to impact those?
I mean, as far as, I think what it, what it impacts is routines. I don't know that it changes people. It doesn't change your access necessarily. It just changes your habit, right? Your habit is I pull up, I make a left, and I go where I want to go. In this case, I would go through the intersection, make a U-turn, make a right. And so I'm not exposed to a left turn movement, right? I'm not exposed to getting T-boned by somebody who's not paying attention. I do have to go up, but I have a signal at the next, at the U-turn. So I have a controlled place to make a U-turn, a nice wide opening to make a U-turn on Independence, and I can safely make a right and go where I want to go. So I'd say it's more routine that's changed. And to the, the question with Indian River Kempstil, while I know people had some concerns about it, you talk to people now, I've heard a lot of people saying, I get it now. It makes sense. We like it. And we, we've seen some pretty impressive numbers as far as the efficiency of that intersection. So for 20, $24 million or $22 million, we got a lot of bang for the buck out of that improvement there as well. So.
Thank you. And a second question.
Yes, ma'am.
What could do with the delay for Cleveland?
Of Cleveland?
I'm excited to see delay.
We're, we're excited, too. And again, a lot of this had to do with the, the NEPA, the change in the NEPA process. And it's, it's all good. It's all beneficial, but its impacts we've got to the community, impacts to the businesses, impacts us to some, there's actually some residents out there with the trailer park. So we're having to work through with FHWA through that process. So it's, the end product hopefully will be the same, but it just takes longer. It's a little more analysis, a little more paperwork, a little more justification about why we're doing things, a little more public input as well on some of those steps. So that's all.
Are you talking about years?
Usually with the, the EA, it's about 18 months. So that's what we're kind of seeing a little bit of that impact right now, obviously, with the delay. So yes, ma'am. Of course, it, it holds the design up. You can't work on the design until you figure out what the NEPA requirements are going to be. So it's kind of a critical path delay, unfortunately. Thank you.
Okay, Hutch, Jennifer, Barbara, and Michael.
So Dave, you know, part of what I'm going to talk to you about, I liked that last bullet you had, is about the sidewalk program. Been out a couple of places with, with the director. And, you know, we've been working, I can't even remember, like on the Woodstock project. I don't even know, that was pre-COVID when we got all the signatures and we were trying for grants. And you told us that that wasn't going to be real, wasn't going to fruit, you know, for all the labor for that. And we're stuck in that size there, like you said, you know, it's like a half a mile. So I certainly would like to pursue that as soon as we can. And then the other is, it's getting a little ahead of myself. But as far as, I don't, I know, I'm not, and you don't have to necessarily even answer this, I'm just saying it out loud, is, is that some of the monies for different projects going up, you, you had the picture of Providence Road about how nice that was. And I've heard a lot from the constituents when I was out knocking on doors, how they loved having that come around the corner at Kempstil and go up Providence and all that. But I've also heard from a lot of people enveloping me about trying to carry that on around Dead Man's Curve. You know, they'd like to, they'd like to continue that. So the funds for the sidewalks and all to make that happen. I know that there's, I don't know if there's even anything in the books or anything like that, but.
Yeah, we, we have a request to be not funded list. That's.
Yeah.
I think that number's another $1.9 billion.
Yeah.
So there's, I mean, there's projects out there, and I believe that's on the list as well. So.
Sure. And we're dealing with a problem there. Maybe not a problem. We're, you know, we've got a path that they're trying to spend, you know, I'm sure you're aware, considerable amount of money on. And one of the things I'd suggested was, is could we continue to use that money to help that project, use the money from the other part of the Providence Road? I could be spewing here. But it's just one of those things where I think it should, I don't think anything should be not put on the table to try to make it happen to help the most people.
Sure.
Is what I'm, is what I'm getting at. So thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, David. And you're familiar with this because I know you've gotten emailed on it. And I'll share this because I, we all got an email from Ms. Linda Russell, and I replied all that I would bring it up for discussion. So this constituent is elevating the CIP for Ship's Corner Road. And I'm going to reference a few different documents here, then it's going to end with a question. So I'm looking at emails. It looks like from 2010 where there's conversation and discussion about this CIP project, and it's part of the Master Transportation Plan Capital Improvement Program. And so I'm not going to read this in its entirety, but just a, a brief portion, it says, "In mid-May 2010, CIP Project 2073, Buckner Boulevard Extended, will open, and this intersection will become a four-way intersection. Due to the anticipated increase in traffic on Ship's Corner Road as a result of the Buckner Boulevard project, three projects have been programmed under CIP Project 2300." And the idea is to create a safer place for, there's going to be more traffic, so to ensure that it's safe. And before this had an opportunity to happen, Ms. Russell shared an obituary of a young man who lost his life at that intersection. And so she has been emailing about this project, and you shared in your presentation some of the reasons why it's been removed from the CIP project. And I'll just read from it. It's nothing that we haven't heard just now. It says, "The Ship's Corner Road Improvement Project lost funding in fiscal year '24 CIP, while the roadway CIP faced a $171 million increase in costs due to inflation and escalation. This unprecedented situation forced us to prioritize projects already in construction, those moving towards construction, construction, and those with federal-state funding. Unfortunately, Ship's Corner Road didn't meet these criteria because it was still in the acquisition phase." So I'm looking at this, and, you know, this information is going back to 2010, so it's been 14 years. And my question is, how long on average does it take for a project, once it gets to the CIP and once it's funded to completion typically?
It depends.
Yeah.
I'll give you the lawyer answer.
Yeah.
There's, there's reasons behind that, too. One of the, one of the Achilles' heel for this project is it's totally city-funded. It's a small project. It's totally city-funded. So, and, and just being honest about that, we, we've got priorities with state and federally-funded projects. We've got grants. We have other, you know, priorities that have to be met. And so these, these smaller city-funded projects, they end up kind of falling, I hate to say fallen, on the list of priority. And sometimes it's resources. We've had times we haven't had enough project managers to staff that, to put on that. So we're, we're dealing with the, keeping the plate spinning over here. And meanwhile, that plate's wobbling on top of the stick, and we just can't get to it. So that's been part of the struggle, too, with that. And, and when you get in a project that hangs around too long, design criteria changes. Like we talked about stormwater, you know, our, our stormwater design requirements have changed. So then you kind of have to go back and say, well, what do we got to do to get this thing back up to, you know, where it needs to be? So it just, it's a little bit of a snowball effect sometimes, too.
Okay, Barbara, then Michael.
Punga Ferry Road project started, it was in the CIP, be elevated, and then it got to be a stormwater project and was on the bond referendum. And I guess that's why it's not in your list here.
Correct.
But we really do need to meet with the people down there as soon as we can do something, just to tell them, let them know that you are looking at it. And, and I know we, well, we've talked about the difficulty it's going to be.
Right.
That project in. But I think the sooner we can have a meeting down there, the better.
Yes, ma'am. We've, we've talked about that, too. And we're, we're looking to kind of get maybe a stakeholder group together to talk about that. Okay?
Thank you.
Michael.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one is Lenhaven Parkway Improvement. Is that not on here because it's already funded?
It's in economic development, and it was advertised this past week for construction.
That's good.
Yes.
Congressman Blugi, I mentioned it to you previously. It is out to bid, but we suspect this may go the way, knock on wood, we suspect this may go the way similar to what's happened with Elbow Road and then the one that was in.
Yeah. That's part of why I'm asking.
Yep. So our goal is to go out to bid and see what the market says. And if it comes back that, the engineer's estimate is inadequate to fund it, try to figure out a plan to get funding to it and bring it back to council for council's consideration.
Thank you. Because that project is very important, and it's been delayed by a long time. And it's very, it's very important, I think, to the, we do that, and do it quickly. So it concerns me a little bit that I'll see it here, but I guess it's a different.
Different section, yes.
Yes, it's different. Because it's funded and it's already moving forward. We finally got all the acquisition right-of-way stuff taken care of. So we think we got funded for it, but obviously with the cost increases, we might need to come back and we'll let council know accordingly.
And then another thing that I just want to ask you about, design for the, for these projects. When I say design, I mean the beautification elements. One recent project that Councilmember Rouse and I worked on was just some simple landscape improvements on Holland Road. And people really responded in a positive way to that. And people really responded in a positive way to that. And I think it's because it shows respect for the neighborhood. It shows a fair distribution of city resources that each and every part of the city is deserving of having the same investment in landscaping and beautification as the next. And so I'm just wondering what that looks like as you design the roads and as you're planning for these. I know you're talking about rebar and, you know, concrete. But where does the beautification fit in? And also, how can we consider making more robust investments in those areas that I think would really beautify Virginia Beach and also support our ecology and environment in the process?
Sure, yeah, it's a good question. And typically, when we do any roadway design, I mean, when it comes to engineers, we're not going to give you beautification, that's for sure, right? We're going to give you functionality, that's what we do.
That's why I'm asking, I want both.
Well, what, so what happens is, we work hand-in-hand with Parks and Rec, and that's where we would lean on them. We also, you know, we take projects out to the public as well. But a lot of times we'll start with Parks and Rec and say, how do you see this? There's landscape architects, a lot of professionals over there, they kind of know what they're looking for. The other part that you really want them to weigh in on is the maintenance side of this. It can look nice, but if they can't maintain it or it's going to die in two years, then we've kind of wasted our effort and our money. So our Parks and Rec staff do a great job of helping with the design effort and helping us spec the right thing, making sure that we spec the right plants, the ones that are suitable for this area, they do a great job of that. We have good consultants that bring those proposals forward. And our, again, our Parks and Rec staff will let us know if this is something that's feasible. They're constantly updating their planning list, so we have the latest information. And again, we go out to the public and we ask the public when we go to the meetings, what do you think about this? What's your feedback? And sometimes we'll get, you know, good comments on that, more or less, can you put something over here? We certainly have a baseline that we do with, as far as trees. We try to replenish as many trees as we can. Harder on a road project because we're trying to put so much in a right-of-way, from right-of-way line to right-of-way line. We kind of run out of space sometimes, but we do try to make sure we have aesthetically pleasing projects as well as functional projects.
Thank you. Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Trump, thank you very much. Just really quickly, 264 Independence Interchange Improvements. I understand, do we have a briefing coming up just on that topic?
Yes, I think we got a briefing coming up in April or May on this topic.
Then I'll save it for then, I just want to implore the importance of that project.
Anything else? Okay, thanks a bunch.
Mr. Mayor, if I could offer just one comment, I wanted to agree with Councilmember Berluti's comment on beautification. We, as Dave pointed out, we do try to participate with the community, and we do try to add some elements in. It's important to note, though, I mean, we have a lot of projects up here that are still on the, needing additional funding. And oftentimes, what happens when we get to that part of the bid and the bid comes back higher than we want, and staff is asking, you know, how we get there. I'll be honest, Mr. Berluti, or Councilmember Berluti, that is oftentimes, when I say, hey, can we have the generic sound wall and not the sculpted sound wall? And can we look at how we can scale some of these things back? And it's not because I don't value that or because we don't value that, but in trying to bring it into budget, that oftentimes is the first thing to get hurt. And that's just the, that's just the reality of it. So I just wanted to let you know that that was the case.
Well, I appreciate that, and I can definitely understand it. For the record, I don't really like those sculpted sound walls anyway, but that's a personal preference. You know, they have like shellfish embedded in them, but anyway. I think, I think trees and landscapes, though, are very important. And I also think, and I'm just going to be direct with you, I don't think it's not by design, but it's frustrating to drive down, you know, Holland Road or Rosemont Road and see the condition of the. And I know that we have some improvements coming, so that's why I'm asking. To see the condition of that and then drive down Pacific Avenue and see the lush, dense, beautiful landscaping that exists on that road improvement project. No offense, it looks great, but there, it doesn't feel right, it feels imbalanced. And I'd like to see greater, more balance.
All right, thank you very much, you know, very important topic. Okay, at this point, council liaison reports. Any? Michael.
Well, Mayor, I just have the, I think the sad task of sharing that two members of two different boards that I serve liaisons, that I serve as liaison to have passed away during their service. And I just want to take a moment to, to know that Carrie Waits, who was a member of our Social Services Advisory Board, passed away. And she had a long and very, very impressive record of service, including as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board, and will be missed in her service. And also M. Davis, who was a very active member of the Arts and Humanities Commission, passed away. And she also has a very long, distinguished record of service. And I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge their service and their lifetimes of service to Virginia Beach.
Thank you, Michael.
And I want to echo what Michael just mentioned because Carrie Waits spent a long time at Norfolk State University. And she has that record behind her as dean for social work. And I went to M.'s camp, it was very well-intended. And people from Palo, because she served on the school board, she's mentored many teachers. And they really did a wonderful, including having a sparkling wine because she loved to have a drink. You know, at the repast, just in memory, so it was really nice. And she will be, definitely be missed. And also on April 5th, this Friday, we have the 500th shelters, two of them out near the Cavalier and Marriott, that this is one of the fastest work. As you know, I serve as commissioner on the Hampton Roads Transit and along the Cavalier Shores and that area with groups and so forth that brought it to my attention with all the workers that come and, you know, staying out in the elements. So we started that, I think, in February last year, stayed on it. We had staff, Don Lynn and his staff, Sybil Pappas from HRT on their staff, we met monthly. And in just over a year, we had those two shelters up, and we'll be doing a ribbon cutting. Some of the Gold Key people and executives will be there. Our mayor will say a few words, I will say a few words. So please come out, it's going to be at 11 o'clock off of Pacific, near the Cavalier, two brand-new shelters for Virginia Beach, and we hope to get even more.
Anybody else?
Yep, I have one more last thing. April 22nd, just for you all to think about it, is Earth Day, and all the buses will be free. And what we're trying to do is give council members an opportunity to ride one of those buses on that day, maybe between 11 and 12, you could take the Express Max, just for you to get a feel for a short time coming out and actually riding one of the HRT buses. And that's the newest ones, we have the 15-minute Express. So please think about it, I'll let you know, send something out for us to see when we can gather, whether over at the Newtown or near the Town Center, what we work out by constitution. And just take a 15-minute ride, where you could get a feel of so many people depend on transit. And if you haven't had that experience, I think it's worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hutch, and then Rosemary, Josh.
I didn't have anything, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Last Wednesday night, there was a meeting at the Aquarium South Building with the Dominion Energy people in regard to the Seaval project with mostly Croatan folks. But there were some people there from Sand Bridge, Castleton, the North End. But about 100 residents came out. And it was, and to Dominion's credit, they had a lot of people there. They had about 15 employees there to address their concerns. It was, to say it was a robust meeting is to be mild about it. There were a lot of very upset people with how this has been handled, with the noise and the vibrations. And a big thing that came out, people were feeling that they had been misled with this whole project. I don't think they realized how bad it was going to be with disruption to their lives, where they're pounding and drilling 24/7 so they can't sleep at night. But they also brought up the fact that they didn't know that you were going to be able to see the turbines. And Dominion Energy were like, well, we don't know why, and nobody said, we don't know who said that. And then it came out that Dominion's CEO had said that it was going to be 27 miles out and they would not be seen from the beaches. So anyway, there's been some other news stories since then. Just wanted to let y'all know in case you hear anything about it. I think Dominion is trying really hard, especially now, to handle the lights that are on all night and the vibrations and the pounding and to try to mitigate a lot of these. But I think it's way more than anyone really ever expected, so it's quite the meeting.
Okay, Josh and Sabrina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to let the residents of the Bayside, specifically Lake Shores and Chick's Beach and the surrounding area know that there's a public information meeting on April 11th, Thursday, at Bayside Rec Center from 6:00 to 7:30 to present the results of the ODU Lake Bradford Water Depth and Sediment Survey Study. This was done as part of the Stormwater Quality Enhancement CIP, a collaboration with ODU Research Foundation. And they conducted a water depth and sediment study in Lake Bradford to characterize the water depth in the lake, determine the thickness of the sediment, and to examine the surface water quality. So those study results will be released and made public from 6:00 to 7:30 on Thursday, April 11th, at Bayside Rec Center.
Sabrina.
It's happened two things. One, I was looking over, looking at some information in social media. And anytime you can bring good news in terms of flooding projects and ways that we're trying to address or mitigate flooding, it's good to make people aware. And so I saw the City of Virginia Beach has been recognized as the 2024 CIO 100 Award winner for its flood model visualization and exposure tool. And so I just wanted to congratulate the staff on that, because that, I mean, that's a big deal. It says that it is an effective tool, and folks are taking notice of that. The other item that I have is related to the homeless task force that I, meeting that I participated in last week. And the homeless task force, they meet every month down at the Oceanfront Library. And some of the information that I noted, I thought was interesting to note. It's important in terms of this task force because it gives you additional information and a different perspective of what's going on. I say more behind the scenes. And it's a meeting where our partners come together and talk about their hands-on ways in terms of addressing homelessness. And so the winter shelter program, we might, you know, actually want to have a presentation on all the data regarding the winter shelter, but it lasted for 127 days. Fortunately, I noted they had to turn away 539 people because they didn't have enough shelter for them during that timeframe. And each year, it was noted how many people came to take part of that shelter. In 21, year 21, '22, we had about 42 people each night. Year '22, '23, we had about 58 people each night. And then 2024, we had over 60 people a day seeking shelter at the winter shelter locations. Some other interesting areas to note, ODU is offering healthcare services at the HRC, which is important. And Ministry also offers those services for people to come in and take advantage of services at free of charge. There's also an increase in encampments that was noted. And I also highlighted that there is a need for additional outreach workers to address some of the concerns at places like the Potter's House, because they are in need of outreach individuals who can help them mitigate some of the issues that they see on a daily basis. And then the last thing that I thought was of note, in terms of outreach workers, I'll also say perhaps this is something we can consider for the budget in terms of making sure we have the necessary folks to reach out to people who are homeless. But the last area I noted, there is no connection for people to get to the HRC. And so there are a lot of services there, but there's not transportation for them to get there, to take advantage of those, you know, valuable resources. And so I know that we talked about, a couple of weeks ago, there was a presentation that says that we are starting transportation again. And this information really confirms and highlights that we do need transportation and make sure people are connected to the services that are offered at the HRC. I would encourage anybody, I know Worth, Councilmember Remick attends those meetings on a regular basis as well. But I would encourage anyone else who's interested in getting a different perspective of how homelessness is being addressed by our partners who do yeoman's work and behind-the-scenes work that we may not know about. And so they give you the perspective, they give you data, and they're very tenacious at what they do, and they do a great job. So please visit one of the meetings so that you can get a full perspective of what homelessness is in Virginia.
Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Last Friday, Good Friday, we had the Summit 55 in District 8. You and Councilwoman Henley, a special guest, and well over 100 people. I wanted to shout out to the Clerk's Office, Communications Office, and the Library's outstanding job. Our community partners provided catering at the group, zero dollars, public dollars spent. And just wanted to highlight that we had, of course, the Mayor's Commission that was present, Victoria Crenshaw, which is our chair, Susan Paddock, Media Pass Chair, Morgan Espinol, Secretary Sandra Parker, and then Janet Carter, Commissioner. We had a resident perspective with Dr. Eric Majek from the NAACP, Valerie Williamson, a retired school principal administrator. Sheriff Rocky Holcomb came and did a senior safety awareness. And then we had a really powerful panel with the, everyone from Nancy Bloom, who did a wonderful job, to Kelly Lee with our Department of Public Health. We had Draper Padgett from the Virginia Beach Fire Department, Linda Tripp, Virginia Beach Emergency Medical Services. And then Councilwoman Henley, really thank you. You closed us out with a really detailed overview of the work you've done with the Senior Resource Center. And I think left people inspired of what is possible when we collaborate. So it was a really good event, I didn't know we had planned it for Good Friday. Wasn't expecting that many people, but thank you all for your support. And of note, every district was represented in terms of citizens. So had a lot of opportunity to engage with the seniors.
It was very well done, thank you for that initiative. Any council comments or things?
Oh, wait, I have one other on liaisons. As we also know very much, on our radar is also the Aquarium. And I think it would be prudent at this point to appoint Worth, Remick, and Rosemary Wilson as, you know, the mayor's liaison, so we build a better bridge, you know, with the folks as we tackle on a most challenging problem, okay? Okay, anybody else for council comments? Tell you what, if I can bring something up that I think is of an important thing, a decision I made, you know, as we sit around and we. decision I made, you know, as we sit around and we go through these budget presentations, we found out there, every time we come here, we find that it's more and more challenging. And we have a lot of decisions to do and a lot of factors are going to weigh into it. And the other thing is we are on a time clock also for the collective bargaining. And once again, we were tentatively scheduling it for about a time that all the budget stuff was going to meet critical mass. And then after discussing with a few of my fellow mayors in the region about, you know, the sensitivity and complexity of collective bargaining, we're going to go ahead and put it on the agenda, you know, for April. So we're going to have a public comment section after our council informal session next Tuesday, and then we'll bring it up the following week for, we'll talk about it ourselves at the informal session, and we'll get it on the agenda for consideration. I think this is a very important thing. It is, and a lot of it has to do with the time sensitivity. We have to, we do have to deal with this. But my concern was if we were dealing with this, with the magnitude of the budget that we're having it. So this way, I think we'll go into the budget season a lot better. The other thing is too, you know, we drive around and we see all over the city signs about building in wetlands. And it is concerned that a lot of folks have out there. And, you know, there's, you know, some, you know, misunderstandings, misrepresentations. So at the agenda meeting, I brought up the possibility of maybe us bringing forward an initiative by council to, you know, maybe discourage the use of building in wetlands. So once again, I would like to at least put it on the agenda for discussion, but I think a lot of people in the city, you know, would, might appreciate that. Okay. Anybody else for council comments?
Should we say anything about Oceana?
Oh, yeah, okay. And then one other thing, you know, we've been working with Oceana on a, Vice Mayor Wilson's been involved because Oceana is in her thing about, they may be considering bringing a new line of jets to us. So we are going to hopefully do, perhaps do a council resolution in support because Oceana is a jewel and if, it's not only so essential that they're part of the DNA, our families live here, they are vital to national defense, but they were also a big part of our economy. And Patrick, I didn't mention to you, I got a message from council, or I'm sorry, Congressman Whitman, and Admiral Cottle, a four-star admiral, who pretty much runs a big part of the shooting match at, for the Navy, would welcome an opportunity to come in and talk to about that. And I have a contact number. Oh, yes, please.
So this is to emphasize that we're open to any future aircraft coming along. I think that there's kind of a, some of you may not remember Little Navy and Big Navy. I know Barbara does. A Little Navy is us here locally, Big Navy is the Big Navy like up in Washington, the Pentagon. And so up at Big Navy, there was still the feeling that we really didn't want Oceana and the jet noise and all of that. And so we've been told that if we can show our support for Oceana and any future aircraft that might come along, that will really help so that so much doesn't go to the West Coast. And it really could help the future of us keeping Oceana here. Some people, they say, well, just let it go, we could have all that land. But what most people don't realize is we're not going to get that land. And if the operations went away, we would just have a donut, a big hole in our city that would not be producing anything without the millions and the billions that the world brings into our economy. So we've gotten a draft resolution from our Congresswoman, but we're going to also send that to the Navy with John Lauterbach, those units, John Lauterbach, to look at it to make sure that that's good for them as well. But we're looking at this coming forward in the near future. We just want to make you to be aware of this, a really important in the future of Oceana.
Chris, did you have something?
Yes.
Okay, Worth.
So as a follow-up, Vice Mayor, can we have maybe some more description on the potential jets that would be coming, or that would come here?
Maybe when the.
That's, I think, one of the rationale for Admiral Cottle to come. Yeah. But once again, a lot of this, you know, we meet quarterly with the Navy, with Oceana, and we have been with them in Little Creek, you know, since we got put on the blacklist a number of years ago. And then, you know, once again, the future of jet design is dynamic. I mean, the Air Force has this jet, because of Raptor, and that thing can do everything, and it costs, I think, $125,000 an hour to fly it. And this thing has more guns and whistles on it. And the evolution of jet aircraft is going at warp speed right now. So once again, I think, you can ask the four-star admiral who's, you know, pretty much over there, and you have the opportunity to answer those specifics. And, you know, if I could just add one thing, and trust me when I say this is not a scare tactic nor an intimidation tactic, but as a Chair of, you know, HURUMFA, the Hampton Roads Military Facilities Alliance, you know, we work with all the branches. And a couple of months ago, we were up in the Pentagon. Every undersecretary or deputy secretary of defense said, it's not, you know, China is going to be a major consideration. And as a matter of fact, you know, that has also accelerated tremendous amount of shipbuilding. You know, right now, our Navy is depleted and China's Navy is, you know, getting far more robust. So what we're, like when I say, we're talking about military readiness and we're talking about national defense, you know, I think, you know, we're at the focal point. So, but once again, we can anticipate that. So we'll make the arrangements with Admiral Cottle. He's a very nice gentleman, and you'll enjoy hearing from him. Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay.
Agenda time.
There we go. Agenda time, yes.
Yes, agenda time. Under orders and resolutions.
I do have questions about this first item, which is redirecting the funding funds, and it seems to be continually being changed, and it's all being taken from one of those projects, and that's the Public Health Foundation, which is one of the speakers that were at the Friday program. And it's their program for people who are aging in place. And it's an extremely dynamic program, but they did not get their grant renewed. They've been operating on a grant, and without their grant renewing, that program is going to go away at the end of this year. And so this ARPA funding is extremely important for them, and that seems to be the one that keeps being whittled away here. Their ask was for three and a half million to allow them to continue for two years, but apparently it was going to be approved according to line five in this, what's in our docket, or before the docket, for 1.6 million to allow them to get to, for one more year so that they could possibly get their grant renewed. But now that 1.6 million is down to 1.1 because their money is being used to reallocate to other uses. This is an existing program which is very vital to a lot of elderly people. You heard the chief privates today talk about their involvement with it. It involves the Department of Housing and Neighborhood, Prostation, the Fire Department, and EMS all together in dealing with elderly folks who are very much in need of what's going on. And this program is going to end without this money. And so if they could get at least 1.6 million of the ARPA money to allow them, because the chief today said that they sent a letter to the federal trying to get a grant to continue. So they're desperately trying to find grant money to replace what they did have. And this ARPA money would be a godsend to them if we could at least do 1.6. But if we're cutting it down to one now, that's barely going to give them probably six or seven months at the most, and they'll be gone away, they'll be done.
Hey, anybody else?
Anybody else want to speak to this? Councilman Schollman, this was, do you still want to move forward on this?
I do, and I think it's the will of just, not just me. And so, you know, I investigated along with some help with some others of you, you know, just the nature of this program, the Department of Health program, and learned that there was a request that was made for, what was it, 3.8?
3.5.
3.5, and the program was going to end without this funding in the first place. So there was the 1.68 that was being resourced for the Department of Health program, and there was an ask that was made by one of our community partners.
This money, but they're trying to get a renewed grant. I mean, like I say, the chief today said that he had sent a letter, and he'll get a federal grant, and I mean, if you're just letting them go away, they'll never get another Some of these other ones in here, I want to give it to the food bank and Meals on Wheels. What about just taking it from this Enhanced Neighborhood Rehab, that project, the lake, that's got 7 million. But this program is extremely important, and I would hate to see them, we not get, help them get the time to get another grant.
Patrick. I understand that. I was concerned about, and I think there were some others that shared some concern about lake management being a stormwater use. And obviously our parks and parks and parks facilities that need to be rehabilitated. So, you know, the question was asked in terms of what would do the least harm and where maybe needs and wants, where that intersection was. And my understanding is that the Department of Health program would still be adequately resourced at 1.1 versus the 1.6, that this wouldn't have a disastrous impact. But I'll let the manager speak to that.
Patrick.
So I'll say the 1.1 from 3.5 would have given the Health Department two additional years on this one. From what I heard back from the Health Department today, they feel like they'll get about nine months to a year extra beyond the end of this calendar year, right? So they feel like they could probably get to September or the end of next year, '25, with this additional monies. They will go and try to pursue additional grant fund, funding, but they may not receive that additional grant funding. I think staff, staff is open to whatever suggestion council wants to give as it relates to where it wants to redirect the funding. Staff probably feels if you wanted to take it from the stormwater, you would limit our ability to put stormwater upgrades in certain neighborhoods, you know, but also that one is probably the one that's probably more concerned for staff as it relates to the ability to execute on it because it's not just tied to us, it's tied to contractor capacity. So we'll try really hard to achieve that extra $7 million in neighborhood stormwater resiliency, but the contractors may not be able to get there, you know, but we are open to that if what council wants to do.
I mean, we're taking this money away from the aging in order to fund the food bank and Meals on Wheels. That's kind of what it amounts to. And the food bank, you know, we were first going to give them 500,000, but now we've taken 50 away from them, so they're getting 450,000, and we're getting 50,000 to Meals on Wheels, which I'm surprised they even asked for it. Anyway, I'm just so convinced that this program for the aging needs all the help it can get that I'm not going to be able to support taking money away from them.
Okay, first.
Mr. Manager, just a question because this is, it is important as we start messing with dedications and moving monies around. We've had several organizations that come to us with the narrative that if we don't do it, they're going to go away. I'm not going to go down the list that we've heard, but if the Department of Health is telling you this is going to give them another 12 months past, end of this year, if they got to seven or eight months and the program, because I think it was a pilot, right? Barb, is this the pilot that, the aging in place?
They were operating on a grant, so they needed to get another grant back. And so this would help them get, have another year if we, I mean, they'd asked for 3.5 to give them another two years, but if we could give them enough for one year, that would maybe let them get back in the grant cycle. But I'm afraid without at least enough for another year, they're not going to get another grant. They'll just definitely go.
Patrick, aren't you saying that they would have another year?
What I got from the Health Department was that they feel that this gets them at least nine months, and maybe they can stretch that to another year, but they feel like they could at least probably get eight to nine months out of 1.1 million.
So if they came back to us eight and a half months from now and said, we're there, we're scrapping, would the council be able to make a decision to meet that need to finish out that year?
So, sorry, I think they, I think they'll probably have, you know, and Dr. Padati should probably will have enough to get them through the end of the year, or get them from, to the end of September or towards the end. But I will say this, though, if Dr. Padati and her team are going to try to get grants, if they don't get grants, Dr. Padati is going to likely ask for this in the next year's budget, right? Yeah. Which at that time, I probably won't be able to fund it, you know, or council may give, or she may come in her quarterly presentation and you all might give me direction to fund it, but Dr. Padati is going to ask for this because she understands the value of this program as well. So this might be likely, if she can't get a grant from the federal government or the state or some other resource, she probably will likely bring this up as a, as a request in her next year's budget.
They'll be able to stay open until next year's budget. I mean, that would be July of next year. And if they're going to end at the end of this year, I just would like more information about this program. I just don't want to risk losing it.
Councilmember Henley, I think regardless, I think if she's going to, she feels like she can go at least till September of next year, right? So if council got that information in February of next year, there's still time for council to vet it out.
Of next year or this year?
February of next, yeah. So for example, I'll release my budget to council March of the year, right, '25. She's not anticipating.
Well, I asked for more information this morning than I haven't gotten either, so because I wanted to know what other local governments are doing for food bank, because I think we're taking on a permanent half a million dollars to the food bank, and I'd like to know what other localities are doing. So I'm just not ready to take this step yet.
Okay, Josh.
Oh, thank you. And I was, absolute respect, understand the concern in the comments. I just want to point out that, number one, this is, these are federal dollars that are restricted in terms of what types of organizations can be eligible, what types of spends the money can be eligible for. The reason why $50,000 came off the top of this original $500,000, or $500,000 line item was because a request had come in from Meals on Wheels and because the food bank had received recently a $50,000 community organization grant. So the thought was, it was even money. Again, I want to stress this is federal money, that if it's not obligated before the end of this calendar year, we'll have to go back to the Department of Treasury. So this has absolutely zero budget impact. The food bank did come and make an ask of us in the amount of $1 million. And I, you know, I, along with other people, this isn't just me, but we all felt that eating people was a worthwhile, you know, use of these funds. I'm sure that, you know, food bank folks are watching, they will know that the preference is not to keep walking this year by year by year with additional funding, that, you know, they came to us and with a pretty compelling narrative, figured that it might be a decent idea to try and do, to try and help more with the same amount and to meet them halfway with the half a million dollars as opposed to the million dollar request. So I, and I know we do have a lot of other organizations that come to us and ask us for resourcing, but, Mr. Manager, if you might be able to... But, Mr. Manager, if you might be able to explain some of the restrictions that are tied to these funds and how, you know, there weren't very many, there weren't very many uses into organizations that came to us with asks recently that would, that would kind of fit the bill.
Yeah, so there's several.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, maybe we should just do this. Is this an appropriate conversation for agenda review? Yeah.
Well, that's fine. I'm just satisfied in not being satisfied if the rest of you, I think, all already.
I think we should, this is the end of review. I think we forgot.
No, no, we didn't forget, Michael.
So I know Ms. Henley is a no on this. How's the rest of the council feel?
Are we okay to move forward?
I'm abstaining. Have a letter that I'll based on file.
Okay, we'll put that on consent.
Same. How about the rest of ordinances?
Everybody else okay with that?
Okay, and there's one planning item, and that is District Three, Lynn Haven Mall.
That would be, can bounce that on to consent.
There we go. I got that, Michael. That was good.
Nice little article in the paper today, too.
Yep. Oh, good, yeah. Okay, here we go. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia has amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property discussions or consideration of acquisition of real property for public disclosure or disposition of publicly held property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiation strategy from the public bodies pursuant to Section 2.23711A3, District Four. Legal matters consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice for such councils pursuant to Section 2.2188 in the DOJ/ADA order. Do I have a motion? All right.